We had a Hawaiian Iced Tea. Diet Coke.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening.
Hi, Paula.
Hello, good evening.
Hey, everybody.
Hey there.
Hi.
This quiz reminds me of some episodes of, what did you wanna call it? What was that family name?
So that it can remind you of what?
You talking about the Brady Bunch?
Brady Bunch.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah, Brady Bunch.
Hollywood Squares.
Hollywood Squares.
Yeah.
Good evening, everyone. This is Deputy City Clerk Romero. Mayor Serta, you may start the meeting.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we're ready to begin today's Gardena City Council meeting for June 14th, 2022. Madam City Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Mayor Serta.
Here.
Mayor Protem Tanaka.
Here.
Councilmember Henderson.
Here.
Councilmember Cascanian.
Present.
Councilmember Francis.
Here.
All members of the council are present.
Okay, thank you. We need to go into closed session tonight, so before we do that, Madam City Clerk, do we have anybody from the public wishing to speak on any closed session item?
No, we do not, Mayor.
Okay, so at this time, we're gonna go into closed session, hopefully be back by 7:30, and restart the meeting at that time, so... Okay, if everybody could log off and go to closed session, please.
Okay, can you hear me? All right, just checking, thank you.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Okay, good.
It looks as though everyone is on Miracerta.
Okay.
They may start the meeting.
Okay, I'm just gonna remind everybody to please mute your phones. Two seconds here. All set here. Becky, are we live already?
Yes, we are.
Thank you. So if we're all ready, we're ready to begin tonight's Gardena City Council regular meeting for Tuesday, June the 14th, 2022. Madam City Clerk, will you call the role, please?
Excuse me, Mayor Surda.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Tanaka.
There.
Councilmember Henderson.
Here.
Councilmember Cascanian.
Present.
Councilmember Francis.
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you. We've just returned back from closed session. Madam City Attorney, do we have anything to report from closed session?
And a mayor direction was provided to staff, but no reportable action was taken tonight. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So next up is our Pledge of Allegiance tonight. Tonight, we have two pledges and their names are Abi Sola Ogum Dumie and Demi Lola Ogum Dumie, and they are from Chatwick School, and they will be leading us in tonight's Pledge of Allegiance. I had the opportunity to meet both of them earlier today, and so I'm excited they'll be able to come on and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And immediately following that, as they're logging on, if we can be led in invocation tonight by Mayor Pro Tim Tanaka. Okay, there you guys are. All right, whenever you guys are ready, you can go ahead and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and then afterwards, if you can stay on for a couple of minutes, we're gonna have our invocation, and then I'm gonna bring you guys back in just for a moment. Okay, so you guys can go ahead and begin.
Sure, I hand over your heart. Ready to begin? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, guys. Hold on for just a second, Mayor Pro Tim, if you'll lead us in tonight's invocation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we just come to you on this great day, which is Flag Day, and we just want to remind everybody, Flag Day is an important day for us, that the red, white, and blue, the stars and stripes, they fly because of those that fought for it and started our country. There are those that died for it and those that continually to push forward to show that we are the greatest nation under this flag. So Father, just be with those that continue to protect us and keep our freedom. Father, we thank you for the leadership in our country, and we hope that things will continue to improve and get a little bit better, even with the economy and the way things are going. We pray for peace in the world. We pray for all the things that are either going wrong or are wrong, that you would be placing your hand upon that to correct it. Father, we pray for this city. We pray for peace. We pray for continued cooperation between all of our citizens. We thank you for our employees that continue to give of themselves to make this the greatest place. And Father, we pray for this council. We pray that this council continues to make wise and great decisions to keep us going forward, and we thank you for all that you have blessed us with. So for your name, many, son, we pray.
Thank you. I'm gonna go back to our pledges here for a second. So tonight, we have a duo, two sisters who've been residents of Gardena. They've been, I'm sorry, residents of Gardena for the past 10 years, Dami and Abi. They are committed to the city of Gardena. They're passionate about giving back and providing service. They've just begun their quest on community service by assisting us with kids to Park Day that we had back in May. Also, they volunteered earlier today for our Flag Day ceremony. That's where I had the opportunity to meet them. And this coming Saturday, they'll be helping out with our Juneteenth celebration. So be on the lookout for these two. They are future leaders for the city of Gardena. So let's everybody just give them a virtual round of applause. You guys did a great job, and we look forward to all the future things that you guys are gonna be doing as you're getting more involved in the city of Gardena. So thank you, guys, again.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, and as always, Mayor Pro Tim, thank you for leading us in tonight's invocation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so we have a couple of, I'm sorry, we have one presentation tonight. This is the drought update by Golden State Water, and I believe we have Ms. Regina Colado on from the Customer Service Department?
Yes, I'm here.
You have the floor now. It's all yours.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I'll just quickly share my screen. Are you able to see my screen?
Yes.
Are you seeing the presentation? Thank you. So, good evening. On behalf of Golden State Water Company, I would like to thank the Gardena City Council, the mayor, the city manager, and his staff for inviting us to provide this brief drought update. As she said, my name is Regina Colado, and I'm Golden State Water's Customer Service Manager. So in this brief update, I'll provide you an overview of the current drought emergency conditions and explain Golden State Water's Schedule 14.1 Plan, which is our water shortage contingency plan, and the Stage 2 conditions in that plan that we expect will impact Gardena customers effective June 26, 2022, after CPUC approval was received. So the council might recall that Governor Newsom proclaimed a drought emergency for all counties in California in October 2021. He urged California to step up voluntary water conservation, and subsequent to that, in January 2022, the State Water Resources Control Board, or the State Board, adopted the first emergency regulations, which includes prohibitions of water use for decorative water fountains, for cleaning sidewalks and driveways, for irrigating when it rains in 48 hours or after, avoiding the overwatering of trees, and requiring the use of automatic shut-off nozzles. But drought conditions continued to worsen, so the governor issued Executive Order N 722 in March of this year, requiring urban water suppliers to implement actions to reduce water use by 20% to 30% compared to 2020 as the water year baseline. And this level of conservation depended on local water supply conditions. So after that, the State Water Board adopted regulations to prohibit water use for non-functional turf in commercial, industrial, and institutional sectors. But more importantly, the State Board required urban water suppliers to implement Level 2 demand reductions by June 10, 2022. And Golden State Water complied, and that Level 2 demand reduction actions is equivalent to the Stage 2 of our Schedule 14.1. And so we made that filing on May 27, and by the end of this week, Gardena customers can expect to receive two notices. The first is the notice of that filing, Stage 2 filing and conditions becoming effective as of June 26. It also describes the Schedule 14.1 Plan in different stages, highlighting Stage 2 as the current stage. And the second notice is a personalized letter informing customers of their Stage 2 monthly allocation targets. So it provides monthly allocation targets, which is 20% less than their monthly usage in the year 2020. Both notices, however, also indicate the two days per week watering day schedule and the banned hours of watering of 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. So those are the two important conditions of Stage 2 that will impact Gardena customers, the watering days. And these watering days and their water allocation targets will be also provided to them on their water bills. So the Gardena customer receives water from a variety of sources, and it's not totally state water project dependent. State water project is a water supply imported and distributed by the Metropolitan Water District of Southern California. So the importance of that is Gardena customers, like most of our customers in the different areas that we serve, are allowed to water two days a week compared to millions of Californians who are dependent on the state water project water supplied through METH. They are required to water only one day a week. So Golden State Water continues to develop, has developed multiple drought emergency informational materials, and we continue to do that. And we continue to try and design outreach to our customers by looking at water consumption by customer type and also within their communities to provide more generalized messaging, and pretty soon, we will be looking at customers' individual consumptions to reach out to those who may need to conserve more and to those who are identified as water wasters. So if the city is inclined, we'd be glad to provide you with links to enable Gardena customers to access these drought emergency and Stage 2 or Schedule 14.1 information from your utility provider's webpage. It is actually a very brief presentation. That concludes my presentation, and I'll be glad to answer any questions that the City Council may have.
Okay, thank you very much for that informative presentation. Does any member of our council have any questions at this time? Let's start with Councilmember Cascanian.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Colado, for this presentation. A lot of information. I have a question. How much of water in general, Southern California, the residents will receive versus waters that, you know, the agricultures they receive? Do we have any percentage-wise?
Though, based on Golden State Water's Schedule 14.1 Plan, we are looking at whether it's residential or commercial customers' 2020 usage, and the Stage 2 of our Schedule 14.1 Plan restricts them to allocations at this point to 20% less of what they used in 2020. So, yeah.
The reason I ask this question, you know, a couple of weeks ago, I was driving in Central Valley, Central California, coming from Fresno back to LA, and I have seen, you know, the sprinklers on the crops, they were going like crazy. I mean, when you're driving down on the grapevine and you see like, it looks like a cloud or something, and then when I went down, it's like they're watering their crops, which is, I understand they're gonna do it. But is the, I mean, I don't know if you have the answer for this or not, but I was just curious, because some of my, you know, neighbors, they asked me about this thing, and I told them that I will get back to you guys. One of the residents asked me this question in specific, you know, are there is a restriction, you know, to those people that they, you know, watering their crops, you know? And why are we squeezed more and then why we have to conserve more water than anybody else, the residents? You know, that's the question is basically.
Yeah, like I said, the restrictions that we are imposing on our customers are solely based on their 2020 usage. We do have some consideration provided to customers who use their gardens for food supply. So in that case, I mean, it's not the same as, you know, the Central Valley crop growers. But, yeah, in our plan at least, we allow for watering or consideration for watering of plants in the garden when they're for main food supply of the homeowner. Now, the residential customers, our residential customers will not receive anything less than eight CCFs or eight cubic feet of water. No, eight hundred, yeah, eight CCFs, which is equivalent to 748 gallons per CCF. Each household will not receive anything less than eight CCF for allocation, which means it's 16 CCFs if they have a bimonthly billing, and that's enough for 55 gallons per day per person for a household of four. So our residential customers will not receive less than eight CCF per month, regardless of what their 2020 water consumption is.
And my last question is, is Golden State Water, they're gonna use this equipment that they're using right now in the valley, in some cities in the valley, northern part of the valley, that they're putting some sort of an equipment on the main so the water flow will not go too much into the households? Because they exceeded their limitations?
No, what we are considering doing would be installing water flow restrictors for customers who have been identified as water wasters, and that could be if they have not fixed a leak, or if they have been reported violating water use restrictions, including watering days for up to more than three times. The first time that customers are identified or reported as water wasters, we would educate them, provide them an education letter. The second time, we would require corrective action, and the third time, we might install flow restrictors, depending on the situation. And that would be at the customer's individual meter, not in the main.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Go ahead, comment.
Okay, thank you for your presentation, Ms. Colado. Just have two questions. One, why the year 2020 as our base year? And then the other question is, how do these new drought regulations impact cities, as cities such as Gardena, municipality?
Okay, um, so the first question, I'm sorry, can you repeat the first question? I apologize.
Yes, no, I was just wondering why the year 2020 as opposed to?
Oh, right, yeah.
2021.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good question. Well, that was what was identified by the governor's office as the baseline. But we do apply But we do apply or allow customers to apply for allocation adjustments when the conditions are, when they have conditions that qualify for allocation adjustments. And how do these drought restrictions affect cities? Well, it really is, these restrictions are imposed on the water suppliers to implement, because it's the water suppliers who will be penalized by fines. But those fines can be passed on to customers through the allocation surcharges. The cities, some of the cities are partnering by passing ordinances that are stricter in terms of watering days, like one day per week, like the city of Claremont. But a lot of the cities, I guess, yeah, like I said, if the water, if they supply water to their customers, then they would be subject to these restrictions, implementing these restrictions. And other cities are just supportive of their water companies in their areas and promote either the water, the drought emergency information or help monitor water wasters.
The city wouldn't, the city is not being placed on restrictions, you know, to water city lawns or parks?
Oh, well, there are specific restrictions by the executive order and by the state board's emergency regulations. So like, I would imagine at this point, the watering of, the watering of, what do you call them? The ones that are in the middle of the road, the grassy areas should be restricted. The median should be restricted. The use of water for cleaning sidewalks, that might, you know, that might impact the city. And I guess, as customers of the water company, accounts that are managed by the, or owned by the city and paid for by the city will be impacted through the allocations.
One more quick question. City of Los Angeles, you can water for eight minutes? Do we have the same, or is that statewide when I'm watering?
Yeah, it varies. And again, it depends on the water, local water supply. I think, I would have to check and confirm. But I think for our Schedule 14.1, it's not eight minutes. We don't really identify a duration, except because the, at the end of the day, we will be looking at the water allocations. And also, it could be reported as water wasting if you create runoff, you know, as you're watering and you overwater and runoff is created. Whether that occurs within eight to fifteen, eight or fifteen minutes, you would still be cited for that.
Thank you.
Any more questions or comments?
I have a question, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Colado, for your presentation. Will the cities, will it be incumbent upon the cities to go through and then find its residents if they don't adhere to the two-day watering schedule? Or we're just, that's a proposed suggestion, and we don't have to really send code enforcement out to people to make sure that they're within their two days?
Yeah, it is optional for the city, depending on how much you want to support. The city of Claremont, for example, they have an ordinance that limits watering to one day, and they do, they are enforcing it. So when we receive water waste reports through the state or as observation of our field staff, we would refer that to the city because they have a budget for enforcing. While other cities who have adopted ordinances say to us that they don't have a way to enforce it. And so we would just have to rely on water waste reports from customers or our staff. But, yeah, it's a variety of ways that the cities can help, but we don't require cities to patrol or find their citizens. But, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any more, go ahead.
This is my quick one. So does GSW have any incentives or any programs? So, because I'm thinking about putting fake grass on my front. So is there an incentive for me to do that, or am I just on my own?
Some of the, I mean, I could have our water conservation, one of our water conservation team members contact you if you provide me your contact information so that they can let you know what's available. Some of the programs that are available, and they can be accessible through our website through links, some of them are not available all year round because it's dependent on funding. But if you're talking about replacing your green grass with artificial turf or something like that, hard state, I could refer you to a specialist to let, to be able to let you know what is currently available and funded at this time.
Thank you.
Any more questions or comments?
I have a question, Madam Mayor.
Go ahead.
Answering to Mayor Protemp Tronaca's question, yes, there is a rebate, actually. It's online. I will send you the link to as well tomorrow. And it is incentive if you take your grass off and go with, you know, more, you know, to conserve water. So there is incentives and rebates.
Thanks.
Any more questions, comments? No? Okay, well, thank you very much. Wait a minute, hold on one second. Our director, Alan Riggs, has a question. Let's see, Madam City Clerk, if we can bring him in.
Thank you, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. You can go ahead.
There we go. So there were a couple of questions about what the city is required to do and what we're doing. And so far, we're planning to be a good example. We're diligently checking our parks to make sure we're not overspraying. We irrigate at night, we irrigate only two days a week. The other thing is, there are, as was mentioned, there's a variety of great programs through West Basin for turf replacement. We are required, as Regina said, we cannot, in the future, irrigate our median islands that are simply for decorative purposes. Some particular, I'm sorry, Vermont, as well as Manhattan Beach Boulevard. We've met with West Basin, we're gonna look at a turf replacement program, especially on Manhattan Beach Boulevard with water-wise type plantings. So we're working on this hard. We want to be a good example. We're taking advantage of the programs. And at that point, at this point, I think we're well informed and progressing well.
Okay, all sounds great.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, we have a couple of hands up, you mentioned?
Yes, we do. We have two hands up. One is Wesley Sanders, and the other one is under public comment.
Okay, let's start with Wesley Sanders.
Hello?
Yes, hi, you can go ahead and begin.
Yeah, hi. I own a property in the city of Gardena, and it's located at 1024 West 165th Place. And it's being criminally trespassed by best way with psych. I approached the city.
Mr. Sanders, if I can stop you for just one second. I think your item might be an oral communication. And if you can just stay in the queue, I'll make sure that our staff, when we get to that part, and it'll be really soon, will address that. But I can only take questions as it relates to the water right here, what we're doing right now with Golden State. But we definitely will come back to you. I don't, make sure you don't, I'm not avoiding you. Okay?
I thought I was in it for the.
Okay, yeah, sorry, yeah, if you could just hold on to oral communications, which is still on with the Golden State, their presentation right now.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, just hold on. Okay, the next person, I believe, we got?
Yeah, we have one more.
Okay.
Go ahead, yes.
Can you hear it?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, go ahead.
My name is Abel Ruwan. I own a plumbing company on Marin. And the question I have is how you, I hear that you're allocating the so much water, so much cubic feet per family of four, based on family of four, how you allocating the commercial properties or businesses in water usage?
Again, the restrictions for Stage Two will be twenty percent based compared to the 2020 water usage at the business. And that's how the allocations will be determined.
Okay, but I mean, I, I use tarps to protect their business properties. So we wash them in-house. And then the water that I use from the laundry, from the laundry machine, I use it to water my little bit of grass that I have up front, and I have a couple pump trees. But I have more employees than in 2020. So the water usage, it may not reflect what I'm doing, saving water. So, I mean, is there a way I can give me a break or something? Because, like I said, I use the washing machine leftover water. Instead of throwing it directly into the drain, I put it in a fifty-five gallon bucket. And with that water is the one we use to water the little bit of grass that I have in the front of the property and a couple of pump trees that we have inside the property.
Yeah, so in order to achieve a twenty percent reduction from your 2020 water use, you may want to consider cutting down on irrigating, any, an irrigation on the property. And because we find that water conservation could be more effective if you do identify ways to cut down on the irrigation side. Now, as far as number of people in the business, that is not a consideration for water allocation adjustment. It's not a criteria. It only applies to residential customers and number of households if there is a change in the number of persons in their household from their 2020 household size.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know if you understood me, but I'm using, I don't use, I'm not using water to irrigate anything. I'm using the water that I use. My used water from the washing machine, I collected in a fifty-five gallon drums. And that's the water that I use to irrigate my little bit of grass that I have on the street and tree that I have, that there's basically property of the city. And I had two pump trees and a couple little plants inside the property, and that's it. That's all I use. And but I use the water that I, that comes from the washing of the tarps that we use to protect businesses' properties when we do the work in the, you know.
Am I, yeah, am I able to get like your name and your address? And I will be glad to have one of our representatives contact you and discuss your allocation, the allocation targets at your property.
Okay.
Sir, if you could email our city clerk at bromero@cityofgardena.com with your information, with your name. I don't want you to give it over the internet here on TV. But if you could email them, and Becky, she can follow back up with you and get you over to Ms. Regina here and maybe kind of expand on your question a little bit more. Maybe we can find some solution there. But her email address is bromero@cityofgardena.org.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you. Councilmember Cascanian, you have a question?
Yes, Madam Mayor, very quick. I wanted to ask earlier, but I didn't knew how I was gonna phrase it. So now, Ms. Regina, you mentioned about twenty percent for businesses based on 2020 usage and twenty percent for, you know, residential based on 2020 usage, right?
Right. Reduction.
Reduction, yes, I understand. And the governor, you said that he came up with this idea? Or whoever, the staff, I would say, not the governor himself?
Well, the latest declaration or the emergency emergency regulations issued by the state water board after the governor mandated conservation or required mandatory conservation is at Level Two. So that Level Two is anywhere from twenty to thirty percent, depending on local water supply.
Okay. Have we ever realized that in 2020, we were in the beginning of the pandemic? And there was less businesses was used, you know, some of them, they were closed. Everybody was working from home. Isn't it supposed to be vice versa? I mean, because everybody was at home, they were using hundred gallon of water versus, you know, fifty gallon of water, I'm just giving example.
Right.
And we're gonna go based on hundred fifty gallon. And on the businesses, is, you know, it's that they use more. Now they were using less in 2020. And now they even get more, you know, impacted with the, you know, if they use less than that, so, or more than that.
Right. In that situation where if a business was closed and wasn't using any water compared to historical use, let's say, 2019, we could, we could review their situation, Golden State Water could review their situation, and look at what looks more like a reasonable baseline. It could be 2019 or 2021, if the business could prove that due to COVID, they had to shut down. So that would be something that could be considered.
All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Madam City Clerk, we have another speaker?
Yes, we do, Madam Mayor. We have another speaker.
Go ahead.
Ready?
Go ahead, you can go ahead and speak.
Okay, my name is Hopkin Hutchinson. And I remember looking at my bill some time ago, and I discovered that there was a surcharge on my bill because they claimed that I used over a certain amount of water that apparently was allotted to me. And I'm wondering what criteria was used to determine my allotted amount of water?
If that was an allocation surcharge in your firm, Gardena, you're probably referring to the past, the past drought. So during that drought, based on, again, state guidance, we use 2013 as the baseline for that drought. And this drought emergency, the baseline has been updated to be the year 2020, water use for the year of 2020.
So that previous one is no longer in effect?
No, it's not. The baseline at least has changed. From 2013 to now, we're using 2020.
And they did not base it on a yearly usage? Or did they base it on a monthly usage?
What we do is we look at the monthly usage and assign the allocation. So because the water use is seasonal, when it's hot, customers water more, you know, when it's cold, they don't. So it is a month, yeah, we look at the monthly usage.
Yeah, because my contention with that was, it was based on in the winter month, not in the summer month. And we always have to pay more because the usage of water in the summer month is always more than in the winter month. And that was my beef with it.
If your usage fluctuates throughout the year, then your allocation targets would reflect that as well.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Madam City Clerk, do we have any more questions, any more people wishing to speak?
Uh, no, we do.
Madam City Clerk, do we have any more questions?
Excuse me, no, I don't, we do not, well, no, we do not. We do not have anyone else, thank you.
And anybody else from the City Council wishing to speak? Okay, Ms. Colado, thank you very much for the presentation. You know, we have to do now, so we have to serve on our water and our grass. So thank you very much for that, we appreciate it.
You're welcome, and thank you.
Thank you. You know, I missed this earlier. I was trying to hurry up and get into the meeting, and then I forgot to just give our little portion here that we have to read here. Let me just say earlier now, I got notification that our, our link for Zoom is not working right now. So we're gonna be asking everybody if you can either call in, and I'm gonna give that telephone number in just a few moments here. Also be aware that our meetings are on Spectrum Channel 22 if you're in the city, as well as you can go on YouTube and go to City of Gardena. So let me just read this here. In order to minimize the spread of the COVID nineteen virus, Governor Newsom assigned A B three six one. Please be advised the council chambers are closed to the public and that some or all of the Gardena City Council meetings may be attending this meeting telephonically. If you would like to participate in this meeting, you can participate via the following options. You can always email our deputy city clerk at publiccomments@cityofgardena.org by five P M on the day of the meeting and write public comments in the subject line. Also, you can view the meeting live on Spectrum Channel twenty-two, as I mentioned earlier, or online at youtube.com forward slash City of Gardena. Let's see, the I'm gonna go and Madam City Clerk, is the link still not working right now? Because I don't know if I should even give it out, if people want to try it again. Or Deputy Clerk, I'm sorry. Do we have any confirmation if it's still down?
We asked Becky that question.
Deputy Clerk?
Hi, Mayor Serta. We do not have confirmation. Everyone's been given, I'm assuming that everyone has been using the meeting ID to get in. So as of now, I would just recommend that they do that. If they would like to speak or even use our phone number that is listed on the agenda.
Deputy City Clerk, just for clarification, as it pertains to the bill that allows us to be on Zoom, if someone goes on Zoom and types in the meeting ID number, then they are able to log into the meeting. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so it's just the link that's posted on the website that's not functioning. But if you go on Zoom, type in our meeting ID number, then you will be able to enter our Zoom meeting.
Okay, got it. Thank you. Thank you for the clarification here. So let me just give you the the meeting via the the link here, which is HTTPS semicolon forward slash forward slash U S zero two W B dot Z O L M dot U S forward slash J.
Madam Mayor, I'm sorry. So that link is what's not working. So they would, they would need to log on to Zoom, the Zoom application, and they would need to type in the meeting ID number. If you could provide that meeting ID number, please.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. My mistake. I guess I still wasn't quite understanding here. Okay, so the meeting ID number is eight one three seven one two nine eight three three six. Also, the telephone number is area code six six nine nine zero zero nine one two eight. I'm gonna read that again, just in case for those people who are trying to get this again. The meeting ID number is eight one three seven one two nine eight three three six. And the telephone number is area code six six nine nine zero zero nine one two eight. You can press the number nine as a raise your hand feature and the six to meet when prompted to. If you wish to speak live on a specific agenda item during the meeting, you may use the raise your hand feature during the item you wish to speak on. For non-agenda items, you will be allowed to speak during oral communications. And during a public hearing, you'll be allowed to speak when I open the public hearing. Members of the council, I'm sorry, members of the public wishing to address the city council will be given three minutes to speak. And so the City of Gardena thanks you in advance for helping us take all the precautions and preventing the spreading of COVID nineteen virus. So we're gonna move on here to our next announce, I'm sorry, proclamation here. And that is item number six A, which is Juneteenth Day. Juneteenth Commemoration Day, which is June nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. The annual commemoration of Juneteenth honors the effective end of slavery in the United States and is also considered the longest-running African-American holiday. Celebrations of Juneteenth begin in eighteen sixty-six and continues to be celebrated throughout the United States. On January first, eighteen sixty-three, President Abraham Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation, declaring that all enslaved people currently engaged in the rebellion against the Union shall be then thenceforth and forever free, paving the way to the adoption of the Thirteenth Amendment. Then it was on June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five, that General Gordon Granger arrived in Galveston, Texas and declared that the people of Texas are informed that in accordance with the proclamation from the executive of the United States, all slaves are freed. Therefore, June nineteenth became known as Juneteenth. There were over two hundred and fifty thousand enslaved people in Texas during this time. Emancipation did not happen overnight for everyone. But by December of that same year, slavery in America was formally abolished with the adoption of the Thirteenth Amendment, which declares neither slavery nor involuntary servitude, except as a punishment for crime, whereof the party shall be, shall have been duly convicted, shall exist within the United States or any place subject to their jurisdiction. So at this time, I proclaim June nineteenth, twenty twenty-two as Juneteenth Commemoration Day. And the City of Gardena call upon all our residents to recognize and celebrate the significance of this important historical event in our nation. Okay, we have another proclamation here, item number six B, which is pause for the Pledge of Allegiance. Twenty-one days to honor America, June fourteenth through July fourth, twenty twenty-two. The American flag is a powerful and universal symbol of our national heritage and unity. The Pledge of Allegiance has become a way for all Americans to celebrate and reaffirm that heritage is a statement of our shared benefits and aspirations. I'm sorry, shared beliefs and aspirations. The pause for the Pledge of Allegiance is a call for Americans everywhere, regardless of age, race, religion, national origin, or geographic or political differences, to take time to recite the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. On Tuesday, June fourteenth, members of the community were invited to participate in a special Flag Day celebration that began at eleven A M in front of the Nacoa Community Center. At that time, everyone joined with millions of citizens across our great nation and took time to reflect on our country's freedoms as we celebrated pause for the Pledge of Allegiance. And to further demonstrate our community's solidarity and fellowship, I requested, as as is our city annual custom, that Gardena's Walkway of Flags be flown every day from Flag Day, which is Tuesday, June fourteenth, through Independence Day, which is Monday, June fourth, to emphasize and celebrate twenty-one days to honor America. Okay, so let's move on here. We have no appointments tonight. We're gonna move on to the consent calendar. Madam City Clerk, do we have anybody from the public wishing to speak on any items here?
We have a hand up, Mr. Zahid Ahmed.
Okay, go ahead.
Yes, hi. Good afternoon, City Council and City Mayor. I was wondering if I was wanting to talk about the, let me see, it is it is eight, let me see, it is, yes, eight K. It is supportive services for recreation human services.
Okay, go ahead. Your question?
Yeah, go ahead. Okay, good, good. So I was wondering, LA County has a program for, this is for children, you know, so I I believe the age goes up to, I think, twenty twenty-five or eighteen. Free meals for student, you know, students or children. And I was wondering if the city can potentially fund, you know, have some sort of funding source and, you know, fund this program to meet or match LA County's program. It's to guarantee food or, you know, meal, a hot meal, like a warm meal for students that are, you know, not, you know, that are technically on summer break and school cafeteras are closed. This would ensure that, you know, everyone has food. And I was hoping we could, you know, if we're funding this, we could potentially match that LA County in initiative to have, you know, free food for students that, you know, may, you know, may need a meal. So yes, thank you so much.
Okay, Madam City Clerk, refresh my memory. When a person in public has a question or item, do we pull that item or no? Or they're just asking the question? I'm refreshing my memory here.
Well, I I think.
I'm sorry, did I say Madam City Clerk?
Madam Mayor, we pull that item.
Okay, we pull it. Okay.
Correct.
Okay, does any member of the council have any items they wish to pull?
I do, Madam Mayor.
Which item?
Eight C.
Eight C.
Yeah, eight H. And eight J. And I also had a question about eight K.
Okay, so let me do this. Does anybody else have any items that we should discuss separately? No? Can I get a motion to approve the consent calendar with the exception of item number eight C, eight H, eight J, and eight K?
Move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Madam City Clerk, there was a motion made by Councilmember Francis and a second by Councilmember Henderson. Will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Francis.
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Tanaka.
Yes.
Councilmember Cascanian.
Yes.
Mayor Serta.
Yes. Okay, so let's move to excluded items here. So let's first begin with item number eight C. What's the question regards to this?
Okay, my question, as I was looking through the payroll and warrants, I noticed about twenty-six overpaid refund for overpayment citation. They raised from three dollars to, I think, the highest one was about two hundred dollars. I was trying to figure out, and it all came in a total of about seventeen hundred dollars, two thousand dollars that had had to be refunded. And I just noticed that, I think, last month, there was a few on the payroll warrants. I just wondered what was going on there. There's something that we could do to keep having to refund people. We could be more, not quite sure what the citations were for, but I'm sure people have to get their money back, but I think it's best if we can have, you know, this amount that you pay and that's it. So.
Mrs. City Manager, would you like to address?
Councilmember, yeah, Councilmember Francis, can you elaborate on, I'm trying to look through the.
Okay, well, for example, on page seven, there's a throughout overpayment citation. Page eight, there was overpayment twenty dollars. Page nine, overpayment twenty-three dollars. There were a couple there, one for seventy. On page nine is another one for eighty dollars. On page nine, seventy dollars. Page eleven, seventy dollars. Page twelve, four dollars.
Yeah, you were right, the over citation overpayment, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, one second.
Okay, they go on to, let's see, page fourteen, seventy-five dollars, page sixteen, seventy, hundred twenty dollars, ten dollars. Page twenty, one for seven, the one for two hundred dollars on page twenty-two, that's for two hundred and ten dollars. That was refund collection in error. And then one on page twenty-four for hundred seventeen dollars. I didn't write the who they made out. I just wrote down the the numbers, put pageron and the invoice numbers. But I think you add them all up. My, you know, I add them up on my cell phone, so my math might be off, but it looked like about a thousand dollars in overpayment. I'm just trying to figure out. It's just so unusual. That's odd. I mean, we had it before. And it's just so many this time. It was unusual for me. I I thought it was, but maybe not.
All right, we're gonna because we contract with Phoenix, that's our parking enforcement, I'd have to dig deeper and see what happened as far as why is there overpayment. Usually, maybe people would be paying at the DMV, causing that to be overpaid. We have to reconcile the citation itself with what we receive from Phoenix and other sources. So we'd have to look into that and see what happened.
All right, thank you. Maybe making too many errors. I don't know. Seems like a lot though to me.
Well, we'll, we'll look into it and then I'll have, we'll have a response for you through memo to find out. That I I'm not a hundred percent sure, so I don't want to give any.
Mr. City Manager, may I interrupt you for just a second? I want to bring in Chief Sefel. He has his hand raised and I think maybe he can give us a little bit more clarity here. Maybe that might answer this now. Give him just a second. All right, Chief, you're on.
Hey, good evening. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, great. All right, so those citations, a lot of those have to do with Franchise Tax Board. And it's really about this time because it's right after tax time. And some of the fees are actually collected by the Franchise Tax Board. And then we have to refund the person who has paid. So it's not error on part of the of the department or the city. What this is, is a a an accounting situation that usually happens right now. Now, what you asked, why so many at one time? It's because they're done in batches. So you'll get multiple citations done at a certain time.
So the citation from the Franchise Tax Board, so it's not like ticket or anything like that, no?
Yeah, so when they pay registration fees, sometimes the fee comes out of that of of that amount of money. And then sometimes it gets collected by the Franchise Tax Board. So that's the reason why it's refunded back to the the payer.
Sure is a lot.
Madam City Clerk, we have somebody else who has a hand up on this item?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have a hand up, Wanda Love.
Okay, go ahead.
Mina, you can disconnect because that was an error.
Okay. Were there any more questions on item number eight C? No? Okay, next item is item number eight H. The question regards to that?
Yes, so as as I understand it, this is just an agreement and it doesn't have any a dollar amount attached to it. It's just that in the bid that they give us, we receive federal aid projects from project money from Caltrans. This is just the agreement how the money will be spent or could be spent. Is that what it is?
Yes, we haven't, we haven't updated the agreement for quite some time. And so they wanted us to, they notified us that they wanted us to to redo the agreement and recertify.
Okay, are we going to receive money from them?
I'm sorry?
Are we going to receive money?
Yes.
From Caltrans? You don't have any idea how much yet?
I I don't. I don't have.
Soon to come in a future meeting.
Thank you. I'll I'll be looking for it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was just wondering about that because I thought.
I think it's been years since we updated the agreement. That's why they wanted us to.
We kept asking them every year. We had to update it and they kept saying no. And as we're in the works for additional items that you'll be seeing in the future, they finally decide, oh, you know what? We do need to update it. So they forwarded us their agreement and so that we agree to the terms. And hence why it's come before you tonight. We wouldn't want to ask you to approve the agreement and then the future amounts on the same night. So let's approve this agreement first.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any more questions on that one item? No? Okay, next item, item eight J.
Okay, and eight J, the elderly elderly nutrition program. So this is for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. And I'm recalled from that, again, this is not for X number of meals or X number of people served, or it's just agreement and not nothing how many people served, whether or not it's it's good or it's bad, it's working or not working. This is just saying that 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 we're going to have an agreement that we will receive some type of nutrition program from, I guess, the county it would be.
Once the funds are allocated, Councilwoman Francis, then we will, you know, how we normally have brought forth that that amount for council authorization and approval. And so at this point, it's just that, you know, authorizing that we are going to participate in this in this program.
Is there no type of evaluation tool put into the agreement, you know, that it works or it doesn't work? Or I guess we don't, it doesn't really matter, or I'm not sure. Does that make sense?
It does. I mean, obviously, we have to report, you know, how many how many individuals are served by the program and those numbers and obviously our departments also audited by that.
So but nothing to speak, this is just an agreement. There's nothing to speak to whether or not the program's successful or it's it's what we really want. It's just that we have this agreement that there will be elderly nutrition program.
I think throughout the year, you noticed that we bring forth amendments to the contract being that sometimes they they will increase the amount. So those are different. This is just for me to be able to execute the 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 contract with the agency so we can provide it, we can provide the services.
Okay, so you won't be taking proposals or any, there won't be a request for proposal in this? It'll be the same agency that we dealt with before. That that's not a part of this process?
No, there 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 wouldn't be any RFPs for that. I mean, that this is, this is just an agreement with us in order for us to be able to provide the program.
Okay, with the county of Los Angeles, it is?
Yes.
Okay, any more questions? Anybody? No? Okay, so the next one is item number eight K. Councilman Francis, you had a question, I think, earlier. Mr. Zahid had a question in regards to switching this from seniors or adding. Councilwoman Francis, you had a question, I think, earlier. Mr. Zahid had a question in regards to switching this from seniors or adding, I guess, for kids now as well?
Yeah, Mr. Ahmed's question was about, does this provide supportive services? Does this group provide meals for kids, or all this just for support services for seniors?
This is just for the seniors.
Just for the seniors?
Yes.
And this is with the county of Los Angeles?
Yes.
In-home, in-home health services?
Correct. So we currently have, I believe, seventy-six current case management clients, and thirteen clients are receiving the homemaker services.
Okay, and no, what there's, I guess, in this one in particular, and probably because I went to the Resource Fair for seniors, and one of the things they talked about was elder abuse, and is there, how do we, is there anything that, you know, I'm trying to get to? Then make sure our seniors are being treated properly?
I believe that would be a different, that would be a different agency that handles that. I think elder abuse would obviously be something that might be criminal, though, isn't it?
It is, it is, but it's not written into, like, who a mandated reporter is, for example, or anything like that. It's this is just an agreement that we will have support services from the county, and when the funding comes through, we can identify how many.
Correct. This is just for us to be able to sign the agreement, so that I can, I can execute the contract.
All right.
So, yeah.
Any other questions? Mrs. City Manager, do you want to respond to, or not do you want to, just the comment that was made from the public as far as, I guess, maybe adding kids to this here? I mean, I know it's for seniors, but just address that.
I mean, we can certainly look into it, but LA County is already providing that to our kids.
Okay.
I don't know to what extent our help would be. LA County is obviously a lot bigger than us, and anything they provide would be sufficient.
So, but they are, because I know they're providing, years past, they provided meals for kids at Raleigh Park, and a couple of other parks as well. And right now, they're doing it through our public library system, so we are providing meals for kids here in the City of Gardena.
They, it's called the Twenty Twenty-two Summer Food Service Program, and it's going to continue on weekdays through August fifth. Yeah, lunch, lunch is served from noon to one, one P M., and then snacks from three to four.
Where in, here in our city? Do you know where?
I don't, I'm not sure where they're going to have that.
I saw the county library is doing it at our library, the May Dear Library.
Okay.
Correct.
Thank you. I just wanted to confirm. All right.
I think there might be one at Alonzo Park, because it's not, it's not ours, but close by.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
Madam City Clerk, we have a speaker on the side?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have a speaker, Wanda Love.
Okay.
Good evening, Council. With the food program that's offered by the county, is there any way that we can reach out to the county to see if we have, if we have the ability to offer those meals for these kids at additional locations besides the one library? And then how is the city, if the city is promoting or letting the community know that this is a service that's available? Because we have a lot of kids in the community that go hungry, and I'm, this is the first time I've even heard of this, and I'm not real sure that a lot of the parents and the other kids know about this resource that's only offered at May Dear Library. So is there any way that we can reach out to the county to possibly get additional distribution sites distributed throughout the city, maybe one over at Raleigh Park for the north end, and maybe down at South Park to be able to service these kids? That's my question.
I guess, Mrs. City Manager, we could probably reach out to our supervisor, Holly Mitchell, through their representative, who is always really good about getting right back with us to see if that's even offered, you know, available.
Right, we can, we can, we can reach out to them, and I'm sure they'll agree that we could probably put that on our website or whatnot. I mean, it's, you know, the schools are promoting it right now, and it's also in the news. But certainly, we can, we can add that to our website, maybe, and social media to just make sure that the people that do need it are aware where to get it.
Okay, any more questions or comments? That being said, can I get a motion to approve item eight C, eight H, eight J, and eight K?
Okay, so move.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Madam City Clerk, there was a motion made by Councilmember Francis and a second by myself. Will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Francis?
Yes.
Mayor Serta?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Tanaka?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Cascanian?
Yes.
Okay, let's see, next item, planning an environmental quality commission action sheet. The meeting that was scheduled for June seventh, twenty twenty-two, the meeting was canceled. So next, we'll move on to oral communications. Madam City Clerk, do we have anybody oral communications at this time?
Yes, we do have a public comment hand went up.
Okay, let's go ahead. Okay, Mrs. Sanders, whenever you're ready, just go ahead and unmute.
Hello?
Yes. Okay, sir, you can go ahead and go now.
Okay. I own a property I purchased in Gardena, and a vacant lot on one hundred sixty-fifth in New Hampshire. And there's a person who's occupying my property right now without my permission, Bestway Recycling. I contacted the city to try to file a criminal trespass against him, and I was told that he pulled a business license to operate on my property. So he claimed to me that he had leased the property from the previous owner, and when I spoke with the previous owner, they didn't believe what's. So I went to the police department to file a complaint, and they initially wouldn't take it. And then Sergeant Searle, she was the only one really helpful, and she seemed like she had an interest in helping me out. Then she referred me to the code enforcement officer by the name of Jimenez, and he was very rude to me. Hung the phone up in my face and told me that the business license, there was a lease that Bestway had signed, and that they had provided to the city, and I wanted to see a copy of it. And I was told that they didn't have, or that it wasn't retained. Well, at any rate, I need to get this guy off my property. I need for somebody to take my complaint for criminal trespass so I can do something with my property. And it's been one nightmare trying to get some assistance from anybody at the city of Gardena to help me with this problem. Now, either I'm going to have to go there and try to, you know, protect my property interests, and I want to know what can be done to help me out in terms of trying to get this resolved, because I asked him, I said, well, who's the lady that he leased the property from? He said, some lady down in San Diego. I spoke with both the parties, and they said they don't know this guy. So what can you do to help me out with getting my, getting this guy off my property?
Okay. Mr. Sanders, thank you for bringing this to our attention here. I'm sorry you had these unfortunate experiences here. What I would like to do is if you could email the deputy city clerk at bromero@cityofgardena.com your contact information, and I will sit down and personally meet with you because there's a lot, it looks like a lot of different components going on here, and we will see, you know, what we can, we can work out at that time. I can imagine this is very frustrating, being a property owner and experiencing something like this.
He's using my property rent-free.
Okay.
He hasn't, he hasn't paid. He lied, obviously, because I spoke to both owners. They don't know this guy.
Okay, sir, I, sir, I apologize. You've actually gone beyond your three minutes. I don't want to cut you off. That's why I'd like to maybe meet with you, and we can schedule a time once you send your information over to the city clerk, and, you know, we can try to get to the bottom of this as best we can. And again, I apologize, but I have to stick to everybody only having three minutes to speak at that time. So I don't know if we just cut him off or not here. But, yeah, if you could just email the deputy, I mean, the deputy city clerk at bromero@cityofgardena.com, and I will sit down and meet with you and see what we can, how we can get to the bottom of this.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
That's actually cityofgardena.org.
Oh, I'm sorry. Bromero@cityofgardena.org. Thank you for correcting me on that, and we'll go from there, so. Okay, we have any other speakers?
We have a hand up under public comments, so I'm assuming we have another speaker.
Okay, go ahead.
Hi, this is Judy Kim from the Gardena Cinema, and I actually came to deliver a thank you card, and I'd actually like to read it to you before I actually hand it over. Dear Mayor Serta and Councilmembers Paulette Francis, Rodney Tanaka, Art Cascanian, and Mark Henderson, thank you so much for the certificate of condolence and for attending my mother's funeral on May twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two. My family was touched deeply by your consideration and for adjourning your May ten, two thousand twenty-two meeting in honor of my mother, Nancy Kim. Your lovely words make us proud to be part of the great city of Gardena, and affirm that the city is in good hands with deepest gratitude to Kim family, John, Judy, Ray, and Yegi. And I will hand the card over. That was it. Thank you so much for coming to the funeral. It was, it was unexpected and a pleasant surprise. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And once again, our condolences to your family during this time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, do we have any other speakers at this time?
No, we do not, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Let's see, next up here is departmental items here. First one is item number eleven A. Mr. City Manager?
Mayor Serta, members of the city council, agenda item eleven A is the second reading adoption of ordinance number eighteen forty-two, authorizing an amendment to the contract between the Board of Administration of the California Public Employees Retirement System, or CALPERS, and the city of Gardena. Staff respectfully recommends adoption of ordinance number eighteen forty-two by council, authorizing an amendment to the contract between the Board of Administration of the CALPERS and the city of Gardena to allow cost sharing of the employer contribution pursuant to the government code section two zero five one six for members of the Gardena Municipal Employees Association, or GMEA, the Gardena Management Employees Organization, or GMEO, and the unrepresented confidential personnel, which are the unrepresented. On May tenth, twenty twenty-two, council introduced and conducted the first reading of ordinance number eighteen forty-two at a notice public hearing to amend the city's contract with CALPERS, and for government code section two zero four seven one, council must conduct a second and final reading no less than twenty days following the first reading and the adoption of the resolution of intention. Ordinance number eighteen forty-two is now before the council for a second reading and adoption. The amendment to the contract between CALPERS and the city allows members of the GMEA, GMEO, and the unrepresented to pay an additional one percent of their compensation towards employer contribution rate on a pre-tax basis. And all groups agreed to the cost-sharing arrangements as adopted by council through GMEA, GMEA, GMEO, MOUs, as well as Resolution number sixty-five sixty-five. There is no financial impact. What's required tonight is to adopt ordinance number eighteen forty-two.
Okay, thank you. Does any member of the council have any questions or comments? No? Madam City Clerk, do we have anybody from the public with any questions or comments?
No, we do not, Madam Mayor.
Okay, that being said, can I get a motion to adopt ordinance number eighteen forty-two?
I'll move.
Second.
Madam City Clerk, there was a motion made by Mayor Protem Tanaka, and a second by Councilmember Henderson. Will you call the roll, please?
Mayor Protem Tanaka?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Cascanian?
Yes.
Councilmember Paulette Francis?
Yes.
Mayor Serta?
Yes, okay. Next up is item number thirteen A, which is the COVID-nineteen update. Mr. City Manager?
All right, Mayor Serta, members of the city council, bear with me for a second here. So for coronavirus update, total number of cases in the city of Gardena is seventeen thousand four ninety-five. This is up six hundred ninety-six cases since the last meeting. To, death count is at two hundred and sixty-nine. That is up by one since our last meeting. As far as vaccination is concerned, the children, children five through eleven is at thirty-three point five percent. Those are, those are aged twelve and above is eighty, eighty-eight point seven. The youth twelve to seventeen is at eighty-one point four, and our seniors sixty-five and over is over ninety-five percent. The testing at Raleigh Park continues as of June fourteen, which is today. Total residents tested is six thousand six hundred and sixty-nine. That is a hundred and sixty tests since our last council meeting. And Madam Mayor, so on to my COVID-nineteen report.
Okay, thank you. Wow, six hundred and ninety-five cases. Okay, any questions or comments? No? Okay. All right, then. Next up is departmental item, item number fifteen A. Mr. City Manager?
Mayor Serta, members of the city council, agenda item fifteen A, so this is to approve a four-year contract for citywide landscape maintenance service contract to Mariposa Landscape, Inc., in the amount of four hundred twenty-five thousand, four hundred seventy-one dollars and eighty cents. On March thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, Public Works Department issued a request for proposal, or RFP, for the citywide landscape maintenance services for the twenty-seventh street medians. These services include weekly mowing, maintenance of turf, hand weeding and trimming, irrigation, timing and repair, refuse collection and disposal, and hand watering as required along city-owned locations. The request was published in CR Planwell and the city website, and was also sent directly to five firms known to provide similar services in other local cities. On April twenty-first, twenty twenty-two, two proposals were received for the four-year contract. One is from Mariposa Landscapes Incorporated totaling four hundred twenty-five thousand, four seventy-one, eighty cents. By the way, Mariposa is our, currently providing that service to us. And the other one is from Bennett Landscape Services totaling one million, two ninety-nine, two hundred ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred ninety-two dollars. Mariposa Landscape Incorporated's proposal is the best value proposal taking into consideration qualifications, experience, and costs, and they are a state licensed company with verified successful maintenance experience in the field and will be required to meet all bonding and labor requirements. The company has over forty-five years of experience and services over forty-nine other municipalities. They also are the current landscaping contractor for the city and have met the city's high expectations. This contract is for four years for four hundred twenty-five thousand, four seventy-one and eighty cents, and with an annual inflation factor for up to five percent based on the CPI. The funding source for this is gas tax appropriated in fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, and fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four O and M budget. What is required tonight is approved maintenance services contract.
Does any member of the council have any questions or comments? Go ahead, Councilmember Henderson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. City Manager, regards to the Delta
Mr. City Manager, regards to the delta between Bennett and Mariposa. Has anybody spoken to Bennett about why their delta is so far out from all the other bids received and everything is? I mean, Bennett's a pretty established firm. Just wondering, what do they do different? Do they have new technology or are they doing something different that nobody else is doing?
I had asked our Public Works Director, Alan Rig, the same question and he mentioned to me that Bennett is, they primarily do HOAs, so not much median landscapes. It's not apples to apples comparison. And also, Mariposa is our incumbent landscape, median landscape company. So they have a lot of the processes and programs already in place, so they don't have to redo that. So I guess the main delta is that they don't, they don't do that type of work typically. They maintain homeowners associations and, you know, little communities. It's not the same comparison.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, I have a question.
Let me start with Rodney first and sorry.
Okay, just a real quick one. So with the GSW drought rules now kind of going to effect, how does that affect their performance for us?
So the, the services that Mariposa is going to be providing is mainly, these are trimming, irrigation repair and whatnot. So the changes would have to be made in the watering portion of the.
Landscapes.
Landscape. So everything else is the same. They're going to have to trim, they're going to have to clean, they're going to have to, you know, and then they're going to have to program the timers, but I would imagine it's the same work.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Francis?
You said that Mariposa is already, already working for us.
Mariposa is currently our median landscape company. So this is, this is to re-up the contract. This is to, we did an RFP just to see who's out there that might be better suited or interested in doing this kind of work for us. And Mariposa, based on the RFP, came out to be the, the one that's most suitable for this.
Why a four-year, why a four-year contract? Why four years?
That is the, that is the, the RFP that we specified, just so that we don't go, you know, can do two years. I mean, RFPs take a long, long time to, to complete. It takes, you know, a couple of months, few months to do that. So to cut down on, on staff time doing that and also to lock in the rate that we have now, you know, we, we want to extend that to four years.
So it breaks out to about a hundred thousand dollars a year? More or less?
No, this is, this is, this is four hundred and twenty five thousand.
For four years? So if, if we, if you looked at it, you know, kind of broke down for years, about a hundred thousand dollars a year? No? I don't understand.
Alan, are you, are you right? Is this for a four-year deal, the four twenty five? Yes, it is a, it's a hundred thousand a year. So the four twenty five is total, right Alan?
Yes, it is a hundred thousand per year, which is just a slight bit above what we're currently paying them. And the four-year term is necessary to lock in the lower price. When, when, when a company secures a contract, they're allocating equipment, they're allocating people, they're allocating resources. And so by having, I like to do three to four-year contracts for our maintenance because you get a significantly better price. If they don't work out, we, we have all the opportunity in the world to cut it short.
And is this pretty much in line with what others, other cities are paying for landscape maintenance?
It would be difficult, it'd be difficult to compare because it's, every city has different things that they have, the companies do. We, we in the City of Gardena have traditionally had a contractor do the median maintenance only, not parks and the like, because the maintenance of the median islands is particularly dangerous, quite frankly. And we, it's, it takes an extra level of effort to do the adequate signage and to do the work. So that's why it's unusual for a city that I've been in just to have median maintenance done. I can only say that it's close to what we're paying them for and dramatically less than what the other bidder put for.
So this is just, I know there's one at one hundred thirty fifth, I've seen them, one hundred thirty fifth and Crenshaw, then there's Rosecrans and a little piece we're talking about later at Manhattan Beach. And that's, where else there's, we don't have a lot of mediums in the City of Gardena and maybe, there don't seem to be a lot of mediums in, in our city.
You just named quite a few of them, yes.
Yeah, yeah, from Rosecrans, Vermont, there's a little piece there and then, let's see, not much of it down the beach.
There's actually twenty seven different medians.
Right, twenty, we have twenty seven, twenty seven.
Twenty seven different medians?
Yes.
Any more questions? Madam City Clerk, we have somebody from the public wishes to speak on this item?
Yes, we do, Madam Mayor. Mr. Ahmed?
Okay, go ahead.
Oh, yes. Hi, good afternoon, city council and city mayor. So I was wondering if there's, you know, there's some ideas here. Could we, in the future, could we add a local hire initiative, a two point five percent local hire initiative? So that's what I recommend. Also, is this company, you know, potentially, you know, there's center medians, there's trees, would they be installing or planting these trees if, you know, city buys trees? Could they plant the trees? Or are they charging like a fee? I know there's Performance Nursery in Redondo Beach, City of Torrance uses that and I think a few other cities in the South Bay use that. They, they have a seventy dollars flat rate for tree planting. I'm not sure for center median, so that's the, the thing, I probably, most likely not. So I was wondering if there's in this contract, if we, you know, we can put, you know, a certain amount of trees or ask them as a side letter to this contract, a side letter stating that, you know, they plant one tree a week, you know, because we have a lot of trees that need replacement. We also need to, you know, install, start installing trees. City of Redondo, City of Rancho Palos Verdes has, on their street of Palos Verde Drive East, they have sleeping willow trees and that has helped increase the property value in their city significantly. And, you know, that's one of the contributing factors. Also, Vermont Avenue and Marine, there's a really, it's like when you're making a left turn from Vermont onto Marine, that center median actually shows like tire marks. I'm not sure, probably a DUI, probably drove on that. So, and the tire marks have been there for a few weeks on the, in, like their, the tire marks are on the, the grass, so it's really looking bad. And then also, is this contract, is city, is this just for labor or also materials? Because I would encourage the city, you know, to pay, you know, give them money for, you know, additional money for materials. And then, you know, you can have them take a before and after picture of, you know, this is before picture, this is the after picture and this is how much materials was used. So that, that can be like, you know, you know, different types of materials. So thank you so much, yes.
Thank you. Okay. Do we have any other speakers at this time, Madam City Clerk?
No, no, we do not, Madam Mayor.
Are there any more questions or comments at this time?
So given, given that we're entering a drought now, does that impact the, this landscape proposal or is it just based on things as were previous to drought, you know, the flowers and the plantings and all that?
That's a good question, Councilmember Francis. There's, the medians in our city will be going through changes and we will be doing adjustments to the contract as needed. As, as was mentioned earlier, we will begin stopping the irrigation of turf on Vermont as well as Manhattan Beach Boulevard. So there'll be changes to the contract there in which they won't be doing as much mowing. There'll be reductions in scope there. We'll be doing adjustments and negotiate those with them. And also, you're going to look at later tonight, a proposal for a big project in Artesia, which will entirely redo the medians and we'll, we'll also need to adjust with them in a couple of years, what the price they pay for that. So we've got a lot going on in the city with, with, with the drought and with some projects and we will negotiate with them on those prices as the, the scope changes.
All right, we're almost half, okay. Okay, any more questions or comments? No? So at this time, can I get a motion to approve the maintenance services contract?
So moved.
Is there a second? Okay. Madam City Clerk, there's a motion made by Mayor Pro Tim Tanaka and a second by council member Henderson. Will you call the roll, please?
Mayor Pro Tim Tanaka?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Council, council member Cascanian?
Yes.
Councilmember Francis?
No.
And Mayor Serta?
Yes. Okay, next up is item number fifteen B, Mr. City Manager?
Mayor Serta, members of the city council, agenda item fifteen B is to approve a four-year contract for citywide tree trimming maintenance service contract to Mariposa Landscape Inc. in the amount of four hundred and eighty thousand, four seventy two and two cents. On March thirty first, two thousand twenty two, Public Works Department issued a request for proposal, or RFP, for citywide tree trimming maintenance service for the seven thousand plus trees throughout the designated city districts, city-owned facilities and arterial streets. And in addition to trimming the trees in a four-year rotation, contractor may also serve, service sick trees, remove dead trees and plant new trees. Request was published in CR Planwell and the city website was also sent directly to seven firms known to provide similar services in other local cities. And on April twenty eighth, two thousand twenty two, six proposals were received for the four-year contract. Mariposa Landscape Incorporated's proposal had the best value for the city, taking into consideration qualifications, preferences, experience and costs. They are a state licensed company with verified successful maintenance experience in the field and will be required to meet all bonding and labor requirements. Mariposa Landscape has over forty five years of experience, has provided similar services to eight municipalities and have references that rank them as providing excellent tree trimming services. And they are also the current landscaping contractor with the city and has met the city's high expectations. In addition to tree trimming and the public right of way, the city anticipates having Mariposa Landscape perform tree trimming maintenance in city parks. The budget for this additional task will be proposed and included in fiscal year two thousand twenty two, two thousand twenty three and fiscal year two thousand twenty three, two thousand twenty four budgets. The current budget is seven hundred thousand for a four-year tree trimming contract based on past costs from previous contracts. The current tree trimming contract with West Coast Arbors Incorporated was a hundred ninety eight thousand, two fifty six for fiscal year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty and one hundred, one hundred and fifty nine, six sixty for fiscal year two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty one. Staff recommends the city council approve the four-year citywide tree trimming maintenance service contract to Mariposa Landscapes Incorporated in the amount of four hundred and eighty thousand, four seventy two and two cents. And there will be a cost savings of approximately two hundred and forty thousand over the life of the contract. The contract term is for four years and the contract is for four hundred and eighty thousand, four seventy two and two cents. Funding source is gas tax and would be appropriated in the two thousand twenty two, two thousand twenty three and two thousand twenty three, two thousand twenty four O and M budget. What's required tonight is to award a tree trimming maintenance service contract.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments at this time? Councilmember Cascanian?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm glad that this item came up, you know, about now. I asked this question a few times, Mr. City Manager or Mr. Alan Rig. You know, we knocked out pretty much half of Western Avenue from Artesia all the way to Redondo Beach, the trees. So now we have less trees to trim. I've seen around the city that trims are still, looks like a big mushroom going through the, the cables and, you know, electric wirings. And I did raise this question to City Manager a couple of times, you know, and my answer, I mean, the, the answer I received, they're working on it. And I just recall that we just gave them three hundred some thousand dollars not too long ago. I guess it's been four years or three years, I guess. So how many trees they knocked out, sick trees, they, you know, they take it off? How many they replant back? Do we have all this report from them? I would like to get a copy of this.
Sure. What, what the, what the tree trimming company does, West Coast Arbors, they have a GIS system which they keep very, very detailed records on each time they trim a tree, each time they inspect a tree, each time they remove a tree, each time they plant a tree. I, I, I'll admit that we have not done over the years, before I've been here and while I've been here, we could do a better job of planting trees and it's something that's on our radar, which is to start a tree planting program within the city and start filling in a lot of these spaces where, where there's empty trees. The contract and this scope of services, which Mariposa would have, which is consistent with other contracts in cities, and that I administer, is really a safety trim. They go in, they raise the bottom of the tree so that it doesn't impede traffic, they remove branches that are subject to failure, but what they don't do is they don't do big aesthetic tree trims and the like. So it's, it's a limited trim as compared to, let's say, what you might do on your own private property for aesthetic reasons. There's, there's a lot of historical issues we deal with and I'm glad you mentioned Western. Those were the wrong trees planted in the wrong place, those spicuses. And so we've replaced all those with, with low plant trees that are thriving and doing quite well. We're, we're excited about those. That's the right tree in the right place. You also mentioned the trees growing into the wires. Those are always hard to deal with because all you can really do is remove the tree in many cases and we, we do try, it's a very delicate balance in trying to keep a tree and, and when it has competing negative impacts such as growing into the wires, uplifting sidewalk, things of that nature. So we have a lot of legacy issues we're trying to deal with, but you're absolutely right in that I would like to do a more aggressive tree planting program and we can bring that to you at a later date.
Thank you, Alan, about this explanation, but, you know, I feel like, you know, the money that we paid or the money that we are proposing to pay or we approve this four hundred and eighty thousand dollar, I don't know if I'm receiving, you know, that service because I always complained about trees since I became a councilman. I always complained about the trees that they are, you know, they're growing like crazy. The community members, they complained about it. You know, Kevin does a great job. I call him sometimes, you know, customer or business complain about the tree in the front of their business, bang, you know, like within hour, the problem was solved, you know, Kevin, he does, you know, on top of it. But I think this is not our job, you know, and we have to make sure Mariposa Landscaping Inc., you know, they should do, I, I'm not saying they don't do great job. They, I think they should do more. So I, then, you know, I'll see it, that I'll say, oh, wow, yeah, they did, you know, trim the tree or they did a pretty good job, you know. So don't get me wrong, I'm not complaining that they're not doing great job, but I'm not seeing that, you know, that, you know, the, the trimmings that it's supposed to be, my opinion, you know. So, I mean, four hundred and eighty thousand dollars, half a million dollars, it's, it's a good chunk of money. I don't know, I mean, I don't, doesn't matter if it's not coming from my budget, it's coming from gas tax, you know, I understand that, but, you know, it's four hundred and eighty thousand dollars, I think it's quite a bit steep for the service that I'm not visually seeing and I complained about this several times.
Sure, I'm happy to, to look at any individual trees. A little bit of history from what I understand is that the city up until about four years ago was only allocating seventy five thousand dollars a year for tree trimming, which was wholly inadequate and there were many trees, there were many failures and the like. And so we did step up the amount of money we put into the tree program. We're catching up on that, we're getting trees in better shape and I think what you're going to see over the years is as we allocate this money and we, we're allocating the proper amount of money to trim the trees, that they will look better and better over time. And as I mentioned, we're dealing with a lot of legacy issues and the term that, that Edison typically uses is right tree, right place. What we have in the city, as you have in most cities, is the wrong tree in the wrong place that destroy concrete, impede travel, get into wires. So over the years, with, with a good tree planting program with the right trees and the, out, the adequate amount of funding, you're, you're funding about a thousand trees a year to be trimmed is what that ends up being. And we trim the trees, we look at each tree once every four years, which compared to most cities is a very, very adequate and above average type program. So we are above average compared to most cities, but, but definitely if you see any trees, let us know. And I think over the years, you're going to see it getting better and better as we allocate the right amount of money to this program.
I'll sure do that and. I'll sure do that, and, I mean, I will give you a call, let you know the specific trees that, you know, they steal, and you will be amazed, and when you see it, you will say, oh, wow, how come we missed this tree? I mean, I guarantee you that, you will hear from me tomorrow, at least, so. And do they go to seven thousand-plus tree a year in the city? Do they do that? I mean?
Yeah, from, from, from a functional standpoint, what we do is the city's broken into four quadrants, and one of our staff members, one of our park maintenance leads goes through, and he specifically directs which trees need to be trimmed. So we don't let the contractor pick which trees need to be trimmed, and we don't pay them for trees that don't need to be trimmed. So we're very specific, and so probably, that's one thousand out of probably fifteen hundred to seventeen hundred trees in each quadrant. And so we pick those trees, they get trimmed, and so we, we do manage the contract very diligently and making sure that we're trimming, trimming the trees correctly and not unnecessarily trimming trees that do not need it.
Thank you.
Any more questions or comments? So, go ahead. Oh, okay. So I have a question. A few years ago, and I don't remember if this was same contractor or not, we had a, the person at the contract, at the time, their, one of their machines broke down, that I guess where they trimmed the trees, and they left, or I'm sorry, the truck that actually picks up the, I guess like a dump truck, that picks up the items there, and they left like a pile that was over ten feet high in front of, two piles actually in front of residents, you know, their homes, so a person couldn't park there. Companies like this, do they have a backup? I mean, as far as if their equipment breaks down, I mean, they don't just have one dump truck, one unit to, to trim the trees with or so on, so that we don't end up with situations like that in the future?
No, they have a significant amount of equipment. It's unfortunate that something like that would happen. It's, it's not typical.
Okay.
And it's something we don't wanna see, and we'll, we'll make sure it doesn't happen, and they're on top of it. We, we manage the, the contract pretty specifically and daily, so.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Francis, you had a question?
Yes, you said we, the contracts were about how many, a thousand trees in our city?
Yes.
Does it, it just, does that include parks as well, or just on mediums or in neighborhoods?
Very good question. So this contract is specifically for street trees. And so just within the public right-of-way, which is why that we can fund it with our restricted gas tax funding. Within your budget that hopefully you'll approve, I've got thirty thousand dollars in there to potentially have them do some of our park tree trimming. We have some of our trees in our parks that are significantly tall, and we'd like them to get, come in with a certified arborist and make sure those are safe for the patrons of the parks. So this is just for street tree trimming, but we anticipate adding some additional services to them to get into the parks.
And, and we don't have people on staff, or we couldn't, we couldn't hire people, put people on staff to take care of this time, because between this and the landscape, that's almost a million dollars just for landscaping, tree trimming. It's a lot of money.
It, it is, and it's money well spent. I'd rather spend it on proper trimming than settling lawsuits or or having complaints from, from the residents. As you mentioned, we do have a tree trimming crew. They have a limited boom, they do a lot, they do the palms on our Eden Boulevard. They do here and there tree trimming as council members and residents bring up. We simply don't have an eighty-foot boom to get into some of the taller trees, the Masukai and some of the taller trees in rallying. So we just don't have the equipment, and so it makes sense to have their specialized and bigger equipment come in on a limited basis, get the work done, and then head out of town.
No, but on, on, unlimited basis, I mean, trees don't need to be trimmed. How many trees need to be trimmed? Not every week or once a month or anything like that, maybe once a year. I'm, I'm not quite sure, but, I don't know.
Our program is, is as I mentioned, we, we look at every tree every four years. It's in the public right-of-way. Within our parks, we haven't had a contractor in to look at those, and so we think it's, it's a wise idea to have somebody come in and do some proper trimming on trees that on the tops have not been trimmed for many, many years. So that's, that's the intent on having them come in and look at the parks.
And this is pretty much in line with what others say you're paying, or it's over? Your contract, still, still starting this four-year contract, half a million dollars, maybe I'm just.
The, to answer that, the, the unit prices, so the way this contract is bid is we had a number of trees of different sizes, of diameter or breast height, and they came in with unit prices, so as you, as you saw, we had six bids, and the contract is for a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars less than our current contractor that really knows the city. So we're getting a good price and for the number of trees that we have. So it's, it's, we went through a very extensive process involving all the tree firms that are local, and this is the, the best price we can get for the appropriate trimming of our trees.
If I, if I may as well, Councilmember Francis, if we were to do a like-by-like comparison as far as hiring additional staff that with the certification, experience, know-how, plus equipment that we would have to purchase in order to be able to perform the same exact, or if not more, services that Mariposa is, is proposing, I think you, we're gonna be well into over a million dollars just for this. Because we would, we would not hire one or two people, it'd have to be multiple people. And with, with salaries and benefits, you're well into the million or two million, right? That's annually, too. And if gas tax doesn't, doesn't cover the, the salaries, then the general fund would have to cover whatever the shortfall is.
Okay. Any more questions or comments before I open it up?
Who's doing our tree trimming now? Nobody?
West Coast Arborists, which was the third lowest bidder, they bid six hundred and fifteen thousand as compared to the four hundred eighty thousand bid by Mariposa.
Any more questions from the council or comments?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
So I guess West Coast Arborists, you know, in my opinion, they didn't do a great job, you know, everything I've seen so far in the city, and I can prove that, you know, with the trees that still looks like big old mushroom trees. So, and we're gonna give it a shot to Mariposa. This is the first time they're gonna do this kind of service for us, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Madam City Clerk, we have speakers in the queue right now?
Yes, we do. We have three speakers. We start with Mr. Ahmed.
Okay.
Oh, yes. Hi, good afternoon, City Council and City Mayor. So, this is just one, I have some ideas, a list of ideas here. So the first one is, why go for a four-year contract? I know it's gonna, the R F B pro, process, that's okay. If you think about it, in four years, a high school graduate could go to UCLA and come out with a computer science degree and work at Google. Four years, you know, is, is a very long time in my perspective. I would say, you know, think of it as committing college, two-year program. You know, let's see if they, you know, can accomplish, if they can make accomplishments. You know, if, you know, they don't have to do the thousand trees, you know, they can do the five hundred trees and do a good job at it. And then we do a yearly continuation contract where it's two years, you know, you get two years to, you know, one year to learn the city. Second year, you have to, you know, go all out and make sure those five hundred trees are, you know, in good shape. You do two fifty the, the third year, and then last two fifty on the four-year, and then you just do this on a yearly basis, renewal. This way, it's, it's, it's like a report card, or a, it's that, what's that called, the right before the report card, that there's like a, there, there's like a midterm, there you go. So that's one thing. I would also recommend, and, you know, you know, if you have time, drive to Carson, go to California State University Dominguez Hills, look at their landscaping. They have a wide array of trees, and I wanna make sure that, you know, we, we have this in writing that we need eucalyptus trees. Dominguez Hills has these beautiful eucalyptus trees. They give the university amazing, like, feeling, and it's amazing. So that's one thing. The next one is sleeping willow trees. They're, it's all of Palos Verdes is literally sleeping willow trees. So those two trees will actually increase our property value for our city. And then canopy-style trees. So these two trees are canopy-style trees. We could, you know, buy those cheap trees that only cost seventy dollars, or we can spend ten dollars more and buy, you know, eucalyptus trees are only seventy-five dollars at Performance Nursery in Redondo Beach. They have the best trees, and they have sleeping willows also. They have the miniature sleeping willow trees, and they're only eighty-five. So that's something I'd recommend, and that's all. Also, L.A. County has a really good program. They only charge, they have a program with the higher companies. It's only fifty-five dollar a tree, and they do it in streets. So they'll do like, for example, Vermont Avenue all the way from Vermont to Crenshaw. So, you know, just ideas. We could try to contract with L.A. County Public Works and then ask them. They have a contractor that does all the tree trimmings for L.A. County, but they do it on street, so they'll do one street at a time. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker? You can go ahead and begin.
Okay, this is Abel, Abel Plumbing again. I'm on Marine, and I have a property and a business on Marine for, since two thousand and six, and I agree with a couple of councilmen and councilwomen that they, whomever is quote-unquote doing the trimming of the trees, they're not doing the part, because I myself had to do the trimming of my own tree because it looked like a very, like one of the councilmen described as a bad-shaped mushroom, and and I had to, and I done it myself, and my employees, we trim the tree in front of our, our shop at least four or five times since we've been on the property, and I don't know where these companies are trimming the trees, because Marine, again, I've been on the property since two thousand and six, and any of the prop, any of the trees of the neighbors of my, my shop on Marine, starting from Crenshaw all the way up to Vermont, I never seen any of those trees trimmed by anybody. So again, you know, what are we paying to, what are we getting for the, our money on this so-called tree trimming from these companies, whomever the companies are now or have been in the past? Because again, if you drive up and down on Marine from Crenshaw all the way to Vermont, you can see the difference, and you can actually see my tree is a real nice green tree because we trim it ourselves a few times. The, the neighbors, they're ugly, ugly trees. So again, you know, somebody has to go out there and actually supervise these guys that they're doing their job, they're, that, that we're getting something for the money we're paying for. Because four hundred eighty thousand and a hundred thousand dollars a year, and all these thousands and thousands of dollars, I don't see anything that I'm getting for my money. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And the next speaker?
Good evening again. I understand that Public Works, Alan, is dealing with a legacy issue left from the previous contracted service that didn't do a great job. I agree with Councilmember Cascanian and Councilwoman Francis. I also agree with the two previous speakers. Is there a way that this contract can be rewritten so that we're not giving them four years, and we find out four years down the road, four hundred eighty thousand dollars later, that they're not doing the job? And I would love for us to at some point start to bring this work back in-house. I understand that we may not have the equipment to do these jobs, but at four hundred eighty thousand or a mil, almost a million dollars between the two landscaping contracts, at some point, we should be able to purchase the equipment and bring back staff, or hire staff to do some of this work in-house. I notice that we keep hiring a lot of outsourced contract services or consulting firms to do the jobs that we need to be doing ourselves. And I understand that when you look at the cost for personnel and, and benefits and all of that, it can be kind of expensive, but at least you can kind of control the workflow of the employee. But for us to keep hiring consultants and contractors, and then we don't monitor it, watch it, make sure that they're doing the work, after the fact, we're out of the money and we still didn't get the job done. I know, I'm agreeing with Art, there's plenty of trees around here, and I know the director, Alan, kind of walked into this, but there's a lot of trees that need to be trimmed way back, and if this company is only doing maintenance, then who do we have that's gonna come in and trim the trees to the point where it only need maintenance? So there are a lot of concerns about the, the money that's being spent and the services that's not being rendered, not balancing out. So I just wanted to put that on the record.
Okay. Madam City Clerk, do we have any other speakers?
No, Madam Mayor, we do not.
Okay. Either this question can be answered by City Manager or by Alan. This contract, like with any other contracts, if we notice that the work is not being done to our level, we can cancel it, what, within thirty days, if they're not doing what is specified?
I would defer to the city attorney on our, our non-performance provision for cancellation.
Okay.
Well, while Carmen's looking at it, I would just say, one, one of the benefits of having a contractor like this is if they don't perform, we can fire them. And I've heard concerns tonight that I haven't heard before about some of the shaping of the trees. Trees are always tough because everybody has their own idea of what the perfect tree looks like, and some of the trees that, that grow large, some people like them, some people don't, and, but, but it's definitely, I've heard the the concerns tonight. We will definitely administer this contract with renewed vigor. I would say that the comments on, on, on West Coast Arborists, West Coast Arborists, as far as any of the firms out there that does tree trimming, is really the gold standard. And so they, they are known in cities to, to cost more oftentimes, but they are known as, as kind of the gold standard, so. It's not as if we've had some off-the-wall tree trimming firm in here. They, they're known as the best, so, but, but definitely, me and my staff will have renewed vigor. We will follow them, we will make sure that they're trimmed appropriately. Like I said, we have a very aggressive tree trimming program, well-funded, where we're touching the trees every four years. Some cities, I was in Palos Verdes in States, it was every seven years. So it's a, it's a good contract, but within those four years, can trees grow, have wild limbs and the like? And that's what our in-house tree trimming crew goes around and takes care of those individual issues. But I, I've heard the concerns, and we will make sure that we monitor them closely and make sure we're getting what we paid for.
So with regards to the performance language of the contract, obviously, we would have to give the, we would have to present the issue of performance to the contractor to try to see if they could cure. If they're not able to cure to our liking, that we could pursue further with terminating of the contract, but we would have to at least give them the opportunity to, you know, cure the, cure the issue.
Okay. Director Riggs, so I, I was under that impression, too, that the normal rotation is about every seven years. So previously, I'm sorry, I, I may have missed it when you mentioned it, before, we were on, was it a seven-year before? Or were we on, always on a four-year rotation?
My understanding, I don't know the, the rotations, but we had a seventy-five thousand dollar a year program, which was wholly inadequate, and a past city manager had increased that to, to one seventy-five. And so we're back to, so there was a lot of catch-up work to be done, as they were spending almost twice of what we're gonna be spending in the future here to catch up on that work. So I'm not sure if they even had a cycle. Some cities, what they do is they're only complaint-based, and so they're just putting out fires where we actually have, like our pavement management plan and our sewer management plan, we're devising a, a plan to go through and methodically take care of the issues. But as I said, that the trees, that they grow, and by the end of the four years, can some of them be significantly unwieldy? Absolutely. But I encourage you and the residents to call us on those. We have the in-house crew. We can come take care of those.
So also, and I know with some of our other contracts, like, for instance, if we get so many complaints within a year, and, and, and I'm just referencing like some of our other contracts, like if you get and I'm just referencing like some of our other contracts, like if you get more than five hundred complaints a year or something like that, is there something similar like that if we're getting complaints from our residents or businesses that?
We don't have a language specific as to a specific number, like the example that the mayor has provided.
I see. Okay. Okay. I saw somebody's hand go, oh, Art, go ahead.
Allen, since we have so many trees, you know, and we're paying this significant money to those people, aren't they bidding for to take care of every single trees in the city with that money that we're paying them?
Over the course of the four years, they will look at every single street tree in the city and the probably seventy percent of them that need to be trimmed will be trimmed. So within the four years, they will look at, review and potentially trim each tree in the city.
Yeah. Okay. Because apparently, in my opinion, with my eyes, whatever I see it, and you know, it's nuts. You know, the money that I paid last time that I authorized it, it was three hundred some thousand dollars, if I'm not mistaken, last time we pay, we were paying the West Coast. And the trees was not trimmed. That's why I filed, I called, you know, the city manager's office and I reminded him, you know, this is not, you know, how often we're doing the tree trimmings? And he explained it to me that, you know, we go quarterly on each areas and, you know, he explained everything from A to Z. But I did not see the trees that on a major corridors, like the resident mentioned earlier, Marine, for example, from Vermont to Crenshaw. You know, you can drive tomorrow and take a look at it. So the major corridors, they did not trimmed it. At least the major corridors must be trimmed so, you know, people will see it. You know, the outsiders that, oh, Gardena's trees are, looks great, not like a jungle. So, you know, side streets, I understand, maybe we send a crew. That's why we have Kevin Thomas, you know, one of your employees, he's doing great, you know. Nine-one-one, he handles it. So he's a good guy, you know. But again, you know, in my opinion, the money that we paid last time to West Coast, I wasn't happy with it. I have to say it, I'm sorry.
Okay, I can't, I can't speak to the past. I can, all I can speak to is the representatives from Mariposa are on this Zoom meeting. Kevin Thomas is on the Zoom meeting, Kevin Quoc is on the Zoom meeting. And it's crystal clear that this is a priority of this council, that implementing this contract needs to be done very well and that we need to hold them to high standards. And that's, that's what we can do for you and the residents.
Thank you very much, Allen. And Madam Mayor, I have a question, or the city manager or the city attorney can answer this question. Can we draw the contract the way that it was discussed right now and presented to, you know, whoever we're going to bid for? And then we can bring it back into the agenda next meeting or the following meeting and to bid on it if they agreed on our terms and conditions?
I mean, if you put it out with those, with those requirements, if they would have, you're asking whether they would agree to a two-year with two additional one options or what other? If you change the terms, then you would have to rebid it all out again because they've bid and they've provided you with an amount based on what the specifications that were provided.
And we revise that, that's what I'm saying. And we revise it and say that if it works or not that way.
I would, I would need to get more specifics. Also, I mean, in all fairness to the other bidders, the new specifications that you were asking for, whether or not they would have bid differently provided the new requirements that you're asking for. So you may get a challenge from the other bidders that were not selected, that provided the new terms that you're asking for, whether they would have bid differently. And it's possible, I don't know unless we go through the process, whether they might have been the lowest responsible bidder.
It was just a suggestion, thank you very much.
Just want to provide you legally what the ramifications would be.
Only concern, you know, Madam City Attorney, my concern is only that, you know, yes, it's okay, you know, we can go for four years, not a big deal. They're going to give us, they are giving us the best rate and everything. But if they don't perform, we are locked in with them for four years regardless, you know. I can't slap on their hand, they say, hey, you didn't do a good job, thank you very much, we don't want you anymore.
Art, actually, we can, because if they're, I mean, I think we've made it very clear to the director what our expectations are. I mean, it was put out in the RFP, we expect them to trim trees to a certain level here. And I mean, I think, like you said, it's been made pretty clear tonight that we're going to be watching. I mean, it's not just the director or his staff, but there are members of the community who are out here watching as well as council members, who, of course, we're the ones voting on this. So, you know, I think, like it was mentioned earlier, it's very clear that, you know, there's an expectation. We're not just voting on this, saying, hey, whatever happens, happens. So, Mr. Director Riggs?
Yes, if I may, one thing I should have mentioned from the beginning on this. So when I came to the city, we had Mariposa Landscaping doing our medians, West Coast Arborist doing our trees. Nobody in the department could find any kind of a competitive bid with, or specifications that was ever done for Mariposa Services. So we had nothing to hold them to in the past. And so what we've done on both these contracts is put them out to bid with specifications where we can hold them to those and get better jobs. Similar to the West Coast Arborist contract, is we did a dovetail onto another city's contract through, I'm not sure if it's through Sourcewell or which, which system we did that through. So we took somebody else's low bid and we selected West Coast Arborist. And so we've never had our own specifications and our own contract for tree trimming. So what we've done on both of these is put together on specifications, gone out to a competitive bid with responsible bidders, come in with lower prices, well, lower prices for the tree trimming. And now we've got a good set of specifications so we can go forward and make sure that the work is being done adequately. And I can assure you that if Mariposa doesn't perform in either one of these contracts, we'll work the city attorney to document it adequately and to either get them to perform or we'll get somebody else. So we are in much better shape on both these contracts than we're in the past. We had no specs. We had nothing to hold them to. And so by both of these processes, we are, not only do we have a transparent process and how we've selected contractors, we have a full set of specifications to get better work and we have provisions to fire them or to reprimand them if required. So trust me, we are evolving in both of these contracts to a much better situation than we had in the past.
All right. Any more questions or comments? No? Okay, with that being said, can I get a motion to award the tree trimming maintenance service contract at this time?
I'll move it.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll start again.
Madam City Clerk, there was a motion made by Councilmember Henderson and a second by Mayor Protem Tanaka. Will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Tanaka?
Yes.
Councilmember, Councilmember Cascanian?
Abstained.
Okay. Councilmember Francis?
No.
Mayor Serta?
Yes. Okay, next item is fifteen C, Mr. City Manager.
Mayor Serta, Members of the City Council, Agenda Item Fifteen C. Just authorize the city manager to execute a funding agreement amendment with the LA County Metropolitan Chancet Authority or LACMTA in the amount of two million five twenty-three, five hundred and twenty-three thousand and approve a contract change order to the professional services agreement with Cannon Corporation in the amount of sixty-three thousand one hundred and fourteen dollars for the Artesia Boulevard arterial improvement project, job number nine-three-five. In June twenty sixteen, LACMTA approved the City of Gardena's Artesia Boulevard arterial improvement project, job number nine-three-five from Western Avenue to Vermont Avenue. In August two thousand and eighteen, LACMTA programmed two hundred and twenty thousand to begin the design phase of the project. And on February twenty-sixth, two thousand and nineteen, council approved the award of the professional design engineering services to Cannon Corporation for one hundred and eighty-eight thousand. After months of design and coordination with several agencies, a design report consisting of ninety percent of the plans, specification and estimates for the project were submitted to LACMTA in October two thousand and twenty-one for compliance and measure R guidelines. The work items were approved and the FAA amendment now includes deconstruction phase, adding two million three hundred and three thousand dollars to the original program amount. The design designated amount for the project, the designated amount for the project by Metro is now two million five twenty-three thousand. Cannon Corporation's original proposal did not include engineering design work on the railroad tracks. Signals, signages, pedestrian facilities and adjacent areas became banned only during coordination with Union Pacific. And the need for a more comprehensive traffic detour and control plan was obvious only when all lanes of Artesia Boulevard needed to be closed when Union Pacific replaces the railroad tracks. Complete replacement of the tracks is necessary to improve the adjacent pavement. The city also added work to improve the aesthetics of the existing median landscaping, irrigation on the entire length of the project and to repave roadway pavements. An additional one million six hundred and fifty thousand proxy funds have been added for this additional scope. Does attached contract change order to Cannon Corporation's original contract in the amount of sixty-three thousand one fourteen is deemed necessary? The budget amount is two million five hundred and twenty-three thousand of Measure R Highway and one million six hundred and fifty, six hundred and fifty thousand of proxy funding. There is no impact to the general fund. What's required tonight is to authorize the city manager to execute a funding agreement amendment and to approve a contract change order for professional services with Cannon Corporation.
Are there any questions or comments? Go ahead, Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. City Manager, I had a bunch, but I'll just narrow it down to one. Because the extra work on Union Pacific's assets and everything is triggering a change order, is Union Pacific going to offer us some, something to make us whole? Or we've got to just do our work and their work too in regards to the tracks and the medians and the asphalt and everything like that? Because that's the work that's triggering the change orders and nobody likes change orders. So in the discussions, are they willing to make us whole for that change order? Or it's just, it's all in our city, so we got to do it?
I don't believe so. Allen, could you elaborate on if you had a conversation with UP?
Absolutely, and thank you for letting me speak. The, the council previously approved a funding agreement to share the costs of the physical improvements of the railroad crossing. So that railroad crossing will go from the dilapidated asphalt to concrete, which I know improving the railroad crossings is a priority of the council. We were fortunate that they didn't put that entire amount upon us. And so this, this is going to be a cost that we're going to have to entirely bear.
So my second question, let me, so thank you for that, Mr. Riggs. So regards to the right-of-way, it's, it's our right-of-way? Do we have like a lease agreement with Union Pacific as they pass through the city or how does that work?
So the ownership of railroad right-of-way is similar to public right-of-way. In most cases, it trumps the city's right-of-way. So our road basically ends, our ownership of our right-of-way ends where their right-of-way is. Then we cross their right-of-way back into ours. So it's, it's an odd situation in which they control their land, we control ours. And for them to spend any money on improving their right-of-way essentially for our benefit, I was quite surprised that Kevin Quoc and the other engineers were able to, to get that done. So yeah, no, we cross their right-of-way with, with vehicles. If that answers the question, I'm sorry for that.
That's, that's fine, thank you. That's all I had.
Any other questions or comments? Madam City Attorney, we have a hand raised?
Madam Mayor, we have a hand raised, yes. Ms. John Med?
Go ahead.
Oh, yes, hi, good afternoon, City Council and City Mayor. So I was wondering, because I know there was a, many, many years ago, I think during COVID, a Tesla vehicle didn't stop at Vermont and Artesia and just kept on going. Are we improving the lights? Because I know on the, the street lights, there is like an orange color rectangular reflective decal that a lot of cities are now installing on their street poles. So what happens is when, like most electric cars that have some sort of like LiDAR technology, essentially are able to pick that signage up and essentially decode it and then, you know, make, make appropriate measures like braking. So that was just the first thing. Could we also incorporate rumble cones? They're like, they're very small, they're probably the size of a dollar bill in a circle. They're on the ground. So when you're exiting ninety-one freeway, the Caltrans, they actually put it on their, on their street. So when you drive through, you hear that you're about to go from sixty-five miles per hour down to forty-five miles per hour. And also, are we having extra lighting? That's also going to be the, the major thing. There isn't, especially on the Vermont and Artesia, there is, there is not sufficient lighting. There is like an LED little pole, that LED is not going to do anything. You've got to put like four LEDs out there to light it out. So that's going to be the next thing. Also, that, so that's essentially like street signage visible, so it's visible at nighttime. And then those rumble cones are really going to help. And then the streets actually, the paint that's being used, they have a, it's called R, it's essentially have different type of reflective properties. So there's like R thirty-five and the higher than the R number, the greater the reflectiveness is. So I was wondering if we could make sure, you know, we have that highest visibility at nighttime. Yeah, thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any more hands raised at this time, Madam City Clerk?
No, Madam Mayor, we have no other members of the public wishing to speak.
Any more questions or comments at this time?
This one, so basically, we've already approved this agreement or this is a new agreement and we're approving a new agreement in addition to an increase. That's up over.
Madam City Attorney, can you help me with how to specify that? I know it's, it's a new agreement. I don't know.
It is, it's the amount because of the change order that was, that is what, you originally approved something in the past for a specific amount. You now have a change order that's requiring that amount to be increased per the change order. So you're now authorizing this new amount.
All right, then. Okay, I wasn't real clear on that, thank you.
Any more questions or comments? Okay. That being said, I'm going to, okay, that being said, I'm going to ask for a motion for us to authorize the city manager to execute a funding agreement along with approve the contract change order for professional services with Cannon Corporation.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Madam City Clerk, there was a motion made by Mayor Protem Tanaka and a second by Councilmember Cascanian. You call the roll, please.
Mayor Protem Tanaka?
Yes.
Councilmember Cascanian?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Francis?
Yes.
And Mayor Serta?
Yes. Okay, next up is item number fifteen D, Mr. City Manager.
Mayor Serta, Members of the City Council, Agenda Item Fifteen D is a public hearing for Resolution Number Sixty-five eighty-two approving a franchise fee, an AB nine thirty-nine SB thirteen eighty-three fee and residential and commercial solid waste disposal and recycling rates effective July first, two thousand and twenty-two. In two thousand and twenty-one, the city determined that the need to amend and restate the agreement between the City of Gardena and Waste Resources of Gardena, WRG, for integrated solid waste management services to incorporate updates and new regulation, regulations such as SB thirteen eighty-three. City retained HF and H Consultants LLC to assist in the development and negotiation of an amendment and restated agreement, the amended and restated agreement between the city and WRG for integrated solid waste management services, now known as the new agreement, includes residential and commercial organics recycling collection services and other changes. On March twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-two, council approved the new agreement, which is from July first, two thousand and twenty-two to June thirty, two thousand and thirty-two. And the new agreement may be extended twenty-four months by mutual agreement of the city and WRG. Due to the new recycling requirements, cost of compliance and recycling Due to the new recycling requirements, cost of compliance and recycling markets, the fees for multifamily and commercial services are proposed to increase five point nine five percent effective July first, twenty twenty-two. There are no changes to the fees for residential services. Tonight's public hearing is to consider the proposed rate schedules in accordance with part two eighteen. The commercial and residential rates provided for in the agreement will not become effective until approved in accordance with majority protest procedures per prop two eighteen, which entailed mailing to affected customers a notice setting for the proposed rates, providing at least forty-five day notice of date, time and location of the majority protest hearing and conducting this, the, the public hearing. These notices were mailed and said customers, said customers on April twenty-eight, twenty twenty-two. If at the conclusion of this hearing, written protests against the proposed rates are presented by a majority of the customers, the fees may not be approved. As of this report, nine protests have been received by the city. In comparison, there are fourteen thousand four hundred and thirty customers in the city. The proposed budget of general fund revenue, one point eight million in fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, and not one point nine million in fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Ten percent of gross revenue from services provided to residential customers, twelve percent of gross revenue from all other services provided by franchisee, one point five percent AB nine thirty-nine SB thirteen eighty-three reimbursement based on gross receipts collected by franchisee to comply with state mandates. A one percent gross revenue for public education for state regulations such as AB three forty-one, AB thirteen twenty-six and SB thirteen eighty-three. What is required tonight is conduct public hearing. Each speaker's comments to be limited to three minutes and adopt resolution number sixty-five eighty-two.
So this is a public hearing. We're gonna go ahead and open the hearing at this time. I'm gonna first begin tonight with our public speakers first. We also have, let me just, we have members from Waste Resources with us tonight as well, the applicant. So Madam City Clerk, do we have any speakers at this time?
Yes, we do, Mayor. We have a public comment, hand up, and Ms. Wanda Love's hand is up.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, again, my name is Hopeton Hutchinson, and I moved to Gardena in nineteen eighty-seven. And at that time, the company that used to pick up the, the trash every week, they used to offer a service where once a year, they designate a day as spring cleaning day, where you put out all the oversized items that could not be fit in the, in your regular trash can. But then the city arranged with another company to take over trash disposal. And one of the promises they made to us is that they would no longer designate spring cleaning day, but we would be able to call three times a year to pick up items that would not fish, fit in our regular trash can. The first time I called for them to come out and pick up something from my house, they interrogated me in a, in a manner that was very intimidating. They want to know how big it is, how many pieces, how heavy it is, and so forth and so on. And they tell us in no uncertain term that if we put out any more than three, then I'll be charged for it. The next time I called, it was down to two pieces. And the same thing. And the tone of their interrogation was very intimidating and it discouraged us from putting things out. I have things in my backyard that I want to get rid of, but because it's only two pieces, they're, you know, does it even worth my time to call and to come out? So that part of the service, we would like to have it again. There are other cities around us that afford their, their resident, a spring cleaning day where you put out whatever you have with no questions asked, and they would pick it up like it was in old times. So I would like to know why we can't get that part of the service back. It's very convenient, and I'm, I'm sure that would help with other people who are dumping things in alleys and places that they shouldn't. I think the reason for that is because they just don't have a service that is provided to them to pick up such items. Thank you.
Our next speaker? We're gonna give our speakers just a couple of moments only because we were having some issues earlier with Zoom, so just bear with us here.
Again, my name is Abel. I got a business on Marine and I'm a plumbing contractor. I do ninety-nine percent of my work is done for commercial properties like Enterprise and the Car, Torrance Memorial Hospital, places like that. So every time I go and do a job, I go and this, I dispose the trash on their large trash bins or containers that they do have on sites. And very, very, I mean, if you looked at my trash cans, I have, I cut my grass like every other week and trim my, my trees every now and then and my pumps every now and then. So I have a little bit of green trash and they, they recycle bin, this recycled trash bin. I, I try to keep it as, as recyclable as possible. I put nothing but cardboard and plastic and things like that. However, I have twice been called out and left a note on my trash can and traded me that they're not gonna pick up my trash cans anymore because we forgot to try, drop off a piece of drywall or something, a piece of other quote-unquote construction material in the gray bean. And I don't think it's, it's right because it's, I pay enough to pick up the trash. And if you, if anybody from the city wants to go by on, on Fridays and look at my trash bins, most of the times they're halfway empty. I don't ever fill them up. And the day that I forget to, or one of my employees forgets to leave that piece of trash can, I mean, piece of a drywall or quote-unquote construction material, and they trade in us, they left us notes, they left us a note, then they are stuck like a sticker on the trash bin, trading us that they're not gonna pick up my trash anymore. And now you guys wanna raise the rates? That's not right. You know, so I, you know, again, I invite any one of you guys from the city council to come by and look at my tree, look at my trash cans, and I keep my place completely spotless. And I'm doing my share of everything, sharing, keeping, saving water, keeping the trash cans clean, and you're gonna raise rates on all this? I don't think it's right.
Before, before we come up, sir, just for clarification, are you, are you a residential house or are you a commercial business?
A commercial business.
Okay. I just want clarification. Okay, thank you. Okay, our next speaker?
I agree with the previous speaker that this is not one of these contracts that the city has to do, and it's not holding the kind of support their job. They're supposed to pick up a lot of the illegally dumped items when they see trees. I think this is a lot for the lack of service that we get.
Bevan, I think you need to mute.
Who?
Bevan needs to mute. I'm sorry, I interrupted, but he's echoing because his volume is up. Here we go. Thank you very much, Bevan.
Thank you. Yeah, it's.
Sorry, love.
No worries. All right, appreciate that. I heard the feedback. But I mean, to, I, I would like the city to reconsider this contract and maybe offer additional services with another company and give the community a choice and an option with the trash company because there's a lot of complaints that I hear about with the trash. And with the amount of money that's being paid to this particular contractor and the amount of illegally dumped items on the streets, it's, it's right up there with the trees, you know? We're gonna pay for the services and the community needs to receive these services. These trash contracts are not cheap by no stretch of the imagination. And I don't think it's fair that our public works have to go out and do the job that we're trying, we're paying the trash company for, because when they don't pick up the illegally dumped items, then public works has to go out and pick up these items. And ten years? That's a long time. If I read that contract right, that's a long time to enter into an agreement for trash. That's my comment. I know that without more than fifty percent, a majority of the vote is not gonna, is not gonna stop this, but I would really like to see better negotiations with these contracts. Thank you.
Next speaker?
Hi, this is Judy Kim from the Gardena Cinema. I just wanted to express my concern over the rising costs of operating a business in the city of Gardena. If you are located in the city of Gardena, you are paying for, you know, the special assessments under the property taxes. You also pay fees, city fees, for all of the utilities such as water and electricity. And now we're being asked to increase our fees for trash services. And for trash services, particularly commercial and multifamily trash services, it can, it's actually very high for the smallest dumpster. So, you know, we've been, as, as, as an operating business, we've been closed since November because my mother was sick and I haven't been operating. But when the pandemic hit, we had to close and we had to stop our trash services. But to be honest with you, one of the things that kind of makes me hesitate to reopen is having to start up trash services again because I may have only a dumpster that's full about one-third of the way, but I still have to pay for that quarter dumpster for the full month of services. And it's, it, it can be sometimes cost prohibitive, and this may be a concern for other businesses in the city. And so I'd really like the city to look hard and reconsider maybe a shorter term on the services, although maybe the city may have its hands tied also because with respect to trash services, you may have to enter into long-term contracts. But in any event, I just wanted to express my concern over the increasing rates and, and the, it, it's not just this, but it's, it's multiple, it's the aggregate of all the different fees altogether that make it very, very difficult to operate a business in, in the city of Gardena. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
The city of Gardena. Thank you.
Give him just a second for our next speaker.
Oh, yes. Hi. Good afternoon, City Council and City Mayor. So I was wondering for like, you know, seniors and single, you know, people that are, you know, like the seniors that are living in the city, you know, they're, most likely, there's a lot of people that are not producing a large amount of trash. Could we potentially put a, a option where trash is, you know, for, for certain, you know, for, if, if you have, if you want to request, you know, for example, there's a resident that wants to request trash pickup not every week, but every other week, so twice a month, you know, let's say it's one week, not the other week. Is there an option for that, you know, especially for seniors? You know, a lot of people are not producing large amounts of trash, and it technically could, that you could charge them half the cost so that, you know, someone that's on a cost, cost budget, that's an option. Also, and this could be added on as a contract side letter, so essentially it's an attachment to this contract in, in a side letter under, motion of understanding. And then another one is trash can washing, essentially a service that could potentially be provided once every, you know, year for trash can washing. You know, there's, it's called a steam clean sanitizing, takes out like mold, mold is really bad, potentially could cause cancer. So stuff like that, it could, you know, sanitize, cleaning, there's private companies that do it, or even this company could potentially do it. Or even dumpster replacement, and this is just if you request it, you could get it once every five years. The next one is also gonna be the trash can, around the trash can washing, especially, and then also rodents. I mean, there's, the city of Gardena, you know, we're having, like, I, I never had like rats in our area, and now we're having them running around, you know, some sort of, you know, with the trash can, you know, some sort of, I'm not sure how it's possible, but some sort of like a rodent mitigation program also. Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you. Next speaker?
We, I don't, we don't have any further speakers, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Before we open it up to, to council's questions or comments, I'd like to make, I don't wanna say, take a pause here, but I'd like to either give a city manager or Alan Wigg or even the applicant from West Resources the opportunity maybe to address some of these questions here. I made a quick list here, one, two, three, four, five. Maybe just briefly, can you talk to us a little bit about like spring cleaning as far as, I know what they had before, I remember that years ago. Can you talk about currently now?
Yes. This, this trash contract is a very good story to tell. A lot of hard work by the city staff in cooperation with, with really what, what are our partners in WRG. So this contract was approved already by the council, so the terms of the contract and the specifications, they're done. All this before you tonight is, is, is the protest hearing for the fees. But with that said, I've heard the questions and I'd like to respond to them. I'm, I'm excited about what the first speaker brought up, the spring cleaning. That is something that I've had in other cities. We did include it in this contract. We have, we're working on the flyers right now, and we work with Bevan for the first spring cleaning, which will occur in August of this year and then will happen every six months. And under that, what will happen is for five weeks, residents will be able to put out items, bulky items, basically everything except for construction debris and hazardous waste out of the curb line, and the trucks will go down and pick it all up. And not only once a year, but twice a year. The way that'll be scheduled is on the first week, whoever gets a residential trash service on Monday, that'll be their Saturday. And then Tuesday will be the next Saturday, and there'll be a detailed schedule that'll come out. So, so that's, that's very exciting. And I concur with, with what Wanda said is that one thing we're, we're also doing with WRG is they are doing the bulky item pickup, that is in their contract. They are doing the ones and twos, and actually it's about fifteen items a day they're picking up. So they are helping us on that. It, it's, it's all of our expectation that when, when the residents have the opportunity to put all their items out of the curb, they will do that. WRG picks them all up all at once, and we don't end up with the random bulky dumps that, that trouble all of us and cause WRG and city staff having to pick up. So I, I'm looking forward to enhancements in that. And just to, to speak in general about the contract, similar to the tree trimming and landscape maintenance, we're, we're making it a better contract for the city. What used to be a sixty-page contract with, with Debbie Morris's help with HF and H is now plus to two hundred pages. It includes a lot more, there's a lot of additional services. There's a lot of the, everybody's been hearing about the organic pickups, there's also recycling requirements. WRG will be doing a lot more for, for all of our customers, residents and businesses in the city. And, and for the residents, as was indicated, there's no increase in price, which is phenomenal. Almost every other city I've seen, in the city I was with before, it's a three dollar increase to implement the organic. So it's a, it's a good story to tell from that standpoint. As far as some of the issues I've heard on, from Abel and Judy on the amount of trash within their, their dumpsters, that, that's something that Bevan, who's on this call, I'm sure he can provide his phone number, he does to everybody, and they can hopefully right-size the trash containers that are, and get them the right level of service. I did check with Debbie, we do not have a senior discount within the, within the program. In regards in general. In regards in general to the rates, our rates are essentially right in the middle of other cities within Southern California. And our commercial rates are slightly higher than the average. So we do have good rates. It's hard to compare rates between cities because as in all contracts, there's a lot of waste contracts in particular, there's a lot of add-ins and additional services. Some contracts don't have the twice-year bulky item pickup. Some contracts, we've added in this contract, an annual compost giveaway. It's a nice added bonus for our residents. We're going to have an annual document shredding event for city residents that they're going to provide. And so it's, it's a much better contract. Also, as, as was described and desired in the tree trimming contract we talked about, there's, I think, six pages of specific penalties for WRG to pay for lack of service, missed pickups, dumping debris, all sorts of things. So we've got a much better contract for the city. As far as the other comments, I, I think I got them, but please let me know what, what I've missed.
So there was two more things that were brought up that I'd like to see if you, if somebody could address. So there was a gentleman who mentioned about when he puts drywall or construction items in his trash, now you, can we address that?
I would ask if Bevan can address that. I do not believe the construction debris is allowed within a three-yard commercial bin. Bevan, is that correct? Yeah, unmute yourself. Bevan, unmute yourself.
Oh yeah, you're still muted. There you go.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. I'm not sure if the speaker have, or is in use of a residential cart? Because he mentioned a small container. If he has a construction material, then drywall can go into a three-yard bin.
Bevan, if I might ask you, and for, for the different residents or business owners that have asked questions, can you provide your contact information so you can work with them directly to resolve any issues?
Yes, they will have to reach out to the customer service office and they will provide that information to them.
Do you have the phone number for them?
Yes, that's 310-366-7600. That's our public line. And they will talk with the customer service supervisors. And if they cannot resolve their issue, then I will step in.
Okay. And there was one more comment that was made. I, I'm curious, the trash can washing, is that something typical that other cities do? I have heard of this service. It's a private service out there that people get. But is that something typical in other cities that they do a trash can washing?
Trash can washing is a private service. However, if it's requested once a year, we will exchange their dumpster.
I see. Okay, got it. Okay, so now I'm going to open it up to council members here. Questions or comments? Don't everybody raise your hand at once? Anybody? Okay, Councilwoman Francis.
So as, as I understand the process there, the notice of protest, there were 14,000 customers and 50% plus one would have had to submitted a written comment in order for what to happen?
In order for the rates to not be approved, Councilwoman Francis.
In order for rates to not be approved. So you only got nine comments. Then are we, as city council, we have to approve the rate or?
Correct, since that is, the, the contract was already approved. This is the formal protest hearing under Prop 218, which requires, this is only good for five years. So although the contract is for 10 years, in year six, we will have to do this again. But in order for the rates to not be approved, you would have to receive 50% plus one of the property owners and customers of record. They're only allowed one objection per parcel. Our city clerk does have a roster of all those eligible to make a protest. The notice was sent to those individuals who are allowed to make the protest. I, I would ask, once the public hearing is closed, that we get an oral report from the city clerk as to what the final count is. Because I'm sure that additional protests were submitted since the staff report was prepared last week.
May I interject really quickly? Can you say those who were allowed to? Can you tell us the difference, who is allowed and who's not allowed?
Correct, so it's, it's those parcel owners, you know, and the customers of record with the waste resource companies. So if you are not the parcel owner or the customer of record, you are not, not allowed to make the protest. And so there's only one protest allowed by parcel. There may be multi-units on a parcel, but again, they are only allowed, and this again is by, you know, California constitution as it pertains to Proposition 218.
Got it. Okay.
So this is essentially state law, the notice protest.
Correct, correct.
That's due to state law.
Correct.
The other, my other question is, why is a rate increase necessary right now at this moment? You know, coming out of pandemic with so many businesses being closed and not perhaps even back up to their profit level as, you know, pre-pandemic levels, profit levels? Why a rate increase at this point in time? Is it, does that make sense? That good question? I mean, why do we have to have rate increase? Could we have waited or?
Well, the contract, the contract was due. And as you recall, we also had additional state laws that, you know, were, you know, with the organics that were recently passed by the state. And, you know, again, it's an additional service that is now being required. So I will tell you all cities, whether or not their contract was up for renewal. It just happened ours was, that we were coming to our, the end of the term. But with my other clients, I will say that because they were forced to deal with this amendment, their leverage was very limited because the state's saying you, your waste taller has to provide this service and you had no leverage. We, coincidentally, it was, it was when our agreement was due that we were able to negotiate. And I commend Director Rig and, you know, our consultant Debbie Morris on the great negotiation that they provided to the city in, in the positive rates that we're, we're seeing, especially for our residents.
Okay, so, so the commercial rates were pretty much, increased commercial rates was unavoidable due to an increased requirement by the state for solid waste.
We, we have, we have that issue as you, I know when you guys passed the ordinance, you know, and unfortunately, as you recall, the state is telling us, do this more in things, but they're not providing the funding.
Exactly. And this is one, this is a comment aside from this. The next time we have a public hearing, is it possible to move it higher up in the, in the, on the agenda so public can get here, you know, do a little bit earlier? Do we always have to, you know, it's like 10 o'clock, we got to a public hearing. Is there any way to move it to higher up so that the public, if they so desire to participate, won't have to wait so long to participate? That's just kind of a side question, not, not even printed, the indication, but just another one before I forget.
I mean, if, if the whole council agreed and we wanted to move the item up, I think just in fairness to all the different applicants for whatever they're bidding for. I'm sure everybody wants to go first to, go ahead, knock it out. But I, I understand what you said because I guess at the end of the day, the public could want to comment on consent counter items or any of those. So if the whole council, you know, agreed, we could move up an item that way. I, I hear what you're saying, but I want to be fair to everybody, so.
No, no, not, not just this particular issue, just in general, when it comes to public hearings, if we could move them up in the agenda. Yeah, on the name of community engagement.
Talking about the oral communication, right?
Well, not, not, well, not, not in oral communication, but somewhere, you know, because we have a package, maybe after oral communications or something like that, just move it up some so public can participate.
I know that our agenda, since the way that the system is set up, but what I would recommend if the council wants to do this, on future items, that someone can make a motion once we pass oral communications, make a motion to take items out of order. And then if you have consensus amongst the council, then you can do that. So on a specific night that you guys have a specific public hearing, typically you get, most of your public hearings come out of community development and that they're typically at the top of the agenda. Not very often do we have public hearings. But on the rare occasion that does happen like tonight, that would be my recommendation to the council, you know, have someone make a motion after oral communications to take the item out of order.
Thank you, Attorney Vasquez, thank you.
Are there any more questions or comments at this time? If not, I'm going to go ahead and close the, the public hearing. The hearing is now closed. Can I get a motion to?
Madam Mayor, can we get an oral report from the city deputy city clerk, please? As to the final protest.
Yes. Madam City Clerk?
Defer that to Becky Romero, Deputy City Clerk, to give that report. Thank you.
Okay.
Hi, this is Deputy City Clerk Romero. And the final count of the Prop 218 protest that the city of Gardena has received is 14.
14. Got it. Okay. Thank you. Okay, so at this time, we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing. And I'm going to ask, is there a motion to adopt resolution number 6582?
I'm moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam City Clerk, there was a motion made by Councilmember Cascanian and a second by Mayor Protem Tanaka. Will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Cascanian?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Tanaka?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Francis?
And we, we have to approve it, we have no choice, is that correct?
The resolution is as to the fact that the protest was not met, that the number was not met. That is what the resolution is, is in essence stating.
So yes, then in that case.
Okay. Mayor Serta?
Yes. Okay, next up is item number 17A, Mr. City Manager.
Mayor Serta, members of the city council, agenda item 17A is to approve change to fare policy to raise maximum age of free fare to under six years of age. Currently, G-Trans allows two children under five years old to ride for free with each fare-paying adult. And G-Trans now participates in the regional Go Pass program, which allows children in participating school districts to obtain a tap card from their schools to travel free on participating transit systems. State of California limits kindergarten enrollment to children who turn five on or before September 1st. Consequently, some five-year-olds do not qualify to enter kindergarten and cannot obtain a Go Pass and still cannot travel for free under G-Trans's current fare policy of free for under five years old. In accordance with G-Trans' major service change policy, G-Trans sought public input and held a public hearing on March 31st, 2022, posted notices on social media and in both the Daily Breeze and the Gardena Valley News. And comments were accepted through April 7, 2022. G-Trans received only positive comments in support of this change in the fare policy. Therefore, to eliminate the gap between children who are four years old who ride for free and those that are five years old who have not yet started school and to support reducing transportation costs for families in our community, staff recommends modifying existing child fare policy to provide free fares to children under six years old starting July 1st, 2022. The costs associated with this change are estimated to be 1,500 per year. G-Trans has included the estimated 1,500 cost within its overall proposed fiscal year 2023 budget, scheduled to come before city council. There is no impact to the general fund. What is required is to approve change to fare policy.
Okay. Does any member of the council have any questions or comments? No? Madam City Clerk, do we have anybody from the public wishing to speak on this item? You're muted?
Pardon me, yes, we do have a member of the public, Mr. Ahmed.
Okay.
Oh, yes, hi, good afternoon, City Council, City Mayor. So just something I was wondering, do we have a city of Gardena for students within Gardena and Gardena High School, of course, a free transportation system for Gardena residents within Gardena? And this is not going to outside of Gardena, only in Gardena do we have a, a free student option. And also, I would increase the age up to 18, you know, since these, these children would be with their parents and, and they're, they're all residents of our city. Think about that. They are residents of our city. We should, within any pickups or within the city of Gardena, anyone up to 18 should be free. We're in fact promoting public transportation, encouraging them to use it in the future. So that's what I would do. No, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Madam City Clerk, do we have any other speakers at this time?
No, Madam Mayor, we don't.
Okay. With that being said, is there a motion?
Quick question.
Sure, go ahead.
So the maximum age to ride for free is six. So that means a TK four-year-old would be riding for free from, from now on.
It was five, now it's changing to six.
Yes.
Okay.
All right. And is it possible sometime later on to? Because I know during the pandemic, we were, didn't we have a students ride free there going on during the pandemic, during COVID?
Everybody rode free during COVID.
Everybody rode free.
It's still, it's still going on right now. They have to, they have to get, their school has to participate and they have to get their tap card from their schools.
Okay, does that include, is this included? This is just in addition to what's already happening with the kids riding free?
That is correct.
Okay.
So what Mr. Ahmed was stating is already happening. Students up to, I believe, high school are already riding for free.
Okay.
This now covers those kids that aren't old enough to go to school yet, so that they can also ride free.
Yeah. We have TK transitional kindergarten starts at four. You're three and by the time school starts, then you can, you can go to school.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Just out of curiosity, what age can a kid ride a bus being unattended?
Should never.
I mean, the only reason I ask is because I've heard of 10 and 11-year-olds riding by themselves. I was just curious, do we have any rules that says under a certain age you can ride without a parent?
I would defer to Director Crespo on this. I, I have not looked into the matter.
Okay. I, I, I'm just curious. He doesn't have to answer now, you can actually contact me later. It just came to mind because.
Madam Mayor, we don't have a policy on that.
We don't? Okay.
So a kid can essentially hop on a bus, 10-year-old can hop on a bus and ride.
Yeah, I, I've, I've heard of some kids who told me they ride the bus 10, 11 years old, unattended. And I didn't know.
How old was that kid that left Gardena and went to Long Beach?
Nine years old. Yeah, okay. Okay, with that being said, if there are no more questions or comments, can I get a motion to approve the change to fare policy?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Madam City Clerk, there was a motion made by Mayor Protem Tanaka and a second by Councilmember Henderson. Will you call the roll, please?
Mayor Protem Tanaka?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Cascanian?
Yes.
Councilmember Francis?
Yes.
Mayor Serta?
Yes. Next up is item number 17B, Mr. City Manager.
Mayor Serta, members of the city council, agenda item 17B is to approve service changes Line 7X Stadium Express. In 2017, development began on the new Inglewood Sports and Entertainment District. The district includes a 70,000-seat SoFi Stadium home field for the L.A. Rams and Chargers of the NFL and the YouTube Theater. Given the new public events planned for the district, G-Trans embarked upon piloting a new fixture route, the Line 7X Express, to provide a direct transit connection between Gardena and the city of Inglewood's new sports and entertainment districts. Line 7X provides service to the entertainment district through the Harbor Gateway Transit Center with one intermediate stop at the Hawthorne Lennox E. Line Metro Rail Station. Currently, Line 7X operates on Sundays only between its hours of 10:45 a.m. and 7:12 p.m. Service began on the Line 7X on September 12, 2021 as a pilot demonstration service. During the pilot, G-Trans analyzed several areas to determine productivity of the route. Those areas included service efficiency, service effectiveness, and service quality. For the purpose of the pilot review, the review period included the same timeframe between September 12, 2021 and February 13, 2022, which included the Super Bowl. G-Trans now recommends Line 7X become a permanent part of G-Trans' fixture route services. In accordance to its major service change policy, G-Trans analyzed the service, its impacts on the public and provided an opportunity for the public to view, to review and comment on the proposal. Based on the feedback from the public and the resulting analyses, staff recommends the following. staff recommends the following: Line seven X be made a permanent route with a span of service between eight thirty a.m. to eight thirty p.m., operating with a thirty-minute frequency with additional trigger, uh, trepper buses added to accommodate passenger overcrowding at an estimated cost of two hundred ninety-three thousand five ninety-eight for fiscal year twenty-three. Line seven X shall maintain the four-dollar route fare structure for the route, and corresponding fares for students, seniors, and people with disabilities will apply. The proposed cost for the service in fiscal year twenty-three is approximately two hundred ninety-three thousand five ninety-eight and included in the overall proposed budget scheduled to come before the City Council. There is no impact to the general fund. What is required tonight is to approve the service changes.
Okay. Does any member of the council have any questions or comments? Mark, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, Mr. City Manager, probably, uh, Mr. Crespo can probably answer this. In regards to the numbers that we, uh, recorded between September twelfth and February thirteen, including the Super Bowl, did we, uh, did we, uh, did we address the skew that the Super Bowl numbers would have given us in the pilot? Because that's a kind of a one-time event, and it could skew the numbers to the high side versus just any random Sunday going over to Inglewood.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. If I understood the question, um, did we consider, um, did the Super Bowl numbers impact our pilot program numbers? Or all the Sundays?
Yes.
So, actually, it, it did, it was included, but the numbers on the Super Bowl were actually one of our lowest Sundays out of all the rest of the, uh, games. So, it, um, we had regular season games that carried more people than what we carried on the Super Bowl.
Okay, so, and then did we get enough data to, on a random Wednesday night, is, is worth running the bus from here over to, uh, the Inglewood Entertainment Center?
So, the proposal, what we're looking at trying to do with this launch is continue the, the program with Sunday service only. So, no Saturdays, no weekdays yet. We're, we're hoping that Inglewood, uh, in the next couple of years opens up the Clippers, opens up all the rest of the entertainment industry, and then we'll have more of a drive, more work, uh, more employment centers will be available, and then that's where hopefully then Saturday and then weekday service. What we're asking today is strictly, um, Sunday service, uh, like we've been running currently.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions or comments?
Yes.
Let's go Councilmember Francis and then Councilmember Cascanian.
Okay, so it runs eight a, eight a.m. to eight p.m. on Sundays? Is that, is eight p.m. late enough? If there's a game that might go into overtime or?
Well, for, uh, 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 most games are, uh, ten a.m., one, one, one p.m., and then occasionally there's a night game that starts around five, and we would have buses that go up until probably like nine thirty or till the game ends, if that's what we need to do. What it doesn't really help with at the moment, we're aware of, is it doesn't really provide access for like concerts. Because we did realize concerts get out at ten, eleven, twelve o'clock. You know, it's something we're going to keep monitoring. We did realize, though, the stadium has enough parking to accommodate the concert crowds. They don't have enough parking to accommodate the NFL football games yet. So, that's where we see the difference, but we have been asked, are you providing service? Um, and at the moment, we stop at, uh, because this is a fixed public service, so we can't really adjust our schedules every Sunday. It has to be consistent. So, uh, the schedule is what we're proposing.
And so it starts at the Harbor Gateway. Does it, does it stop in, because I don't have phone, I see other buses stopping.
Yeah, so we.
Five to one oh five, does it stop there as well?
Yes, that's, uh, uh, that's our first stop once we get off the freeway at the Lenox Station. That way, we can, um, connect with, uh, rail, um, the, the green line or the, uh, that connects there. Sea line, sorry. The green line. It used to be the old green line, now it's sea line.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Cascanian?
Well, Madam Mayor, he answered my question rather than without asking him, so I was concerned about the, the concert, that's why.
Okay. Any more questions or comments? Madam City Clerk, do we have anybody from the public wishing to speak on this?
Yes, we do have a member of the public, Mr. Ahmed.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, yes. Hi, uh, good afternoon, City Council, City Mayor. I was wondering, um, you know, since we want to drive economic growth and economic stimulus, um, dollars into the City of Gardena, um, you know, it's almost guaranteed if these bus stops are more within the heart of Gardena, the heart of Gardena businesses, uh, we will grow our city. And this is, you know, in revenue and jobs, opportunities. So, I, I would encourage the city, you know, look into, potentially, there's a lot. I'm not sure if the city still owns it. It's a parking structure. I think the city sold the rights to it. It's the Gardena Memorial Hospital. It's a parking lot on, in the back of the hospital, and it's, I think, the casino, the, the casino, um, on Rudeford Beach Garden in Vermont uses that big parking lot. It's a, like a, it's, it's most likely available on Sundays. You know, if you think about it, if the bus actually stopped there, you're driving a lot of traffic, uh, to like the grocery store, um, the restaurants. It, it, it will help. I, and it's, it's almost guaranteed, you know, if you're, if you're hungry, you know, you're not, you didn't buy the, you know, twenty-dollar nachos from the stadium, you're going to spend ten dollars in the City of Gardena. So, um, and, you know, and it's going to help our businesses in our Gardena. And we have these large parking lots all around Gardena. You know, we could potentially look into public-private partnership. Ask these businesses, you know, could you potentially let us use X number of like a hundred spots or two hundred spots of parking in return? We'll advertise your business, um, your restaurants in our bus. Uh, we can even have the bus attendant, you know, do a, like a two-minute promotion, you know, just to, you know, create that economic growth, uh, within Gardena. Uh, the next one is Normandy Casino. Um, they already sold what half their lot to, uh, KB Homes. It, I, it, it's possible, you know, if we're not driving traffic, uh, there, we'll see more, just, you know, it, it's possible, you know, we're, we're not growing that economy, so. And, and we, we do pay that casino a economic stimulus rebate, uh, every year. So, I would definitely encourage, you know, the city, talk to that, talk to them, ask them, you know, we, the city is paying you a rebate, a yearly rebate. And it's, it's helping them. If you're driving two hundred cars there, you have a percentage of, what, ten percent? That will spend dollars in the city, uh, for restaurants. We have the best restaurants in the South Bay, so that's what I want to say. Thank you so much.
Okay. Are there any more questions, Madam City Clerk?
No, Madam Mayor, we don't have any other hands up.
Okay. Uh, council's good. Any questions or comments? No? Okay. Um, that being said, can I get a motion to approve the service changes?
All moved.
Okay, um.
I think, I'm sorry, uh, Councilmember Francis moved it. I second it.
Yeah, I was there, hand went up first. Um, Madam City Clerk, a motion was made by Councilmember Francis and seconded by Councilmember Cascanian. Will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Francis?
Yes.
Councilmember Cascanian?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Tanaka?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Serta?
Yes. Next up is item number seventeen C. Mr. City Manager?
Mayor Serta, members of the City Council, agenda item seventeen C is to approve contract with Pulsar Advertising, Inc. in the amount of forty-nine thousand eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars. In September twenty twenty-one, G-Trans launched Line seven X Stadium Express, a new Sunday pilot service to the Inglewood Sports and Entertainment District, uh, and SoFi Stadium. And G-Trans worked with Pulsar Advertising Incorporated to develop a unique concept and branding for this service, as well as a strategic marketing approach, to ensure that it quickly became known as a convenient, cost-effective way to get to the stadium area on Sundays. Thanks to Pulsar's thoughtful planning and development of creative materials, these efforts generated great awareness and drove efficient web traffic to the G-Trans website. The seven X ad campaign directly generated fifty, fifty-eight percent of total website sessions with an average time of landing page that was fifty-nine percent higher than our website average. Overall, this represented sixty-four percent of total website users. Most importantly, this campaign translated into a tangible increase in ridership. From mid-September twenty twenty-one to January twenty twenty-two, Line seven X, uh, uh, Stadium Express saw an increase in boardings of nearly one hundred and fifty percent. Following the success of year one, G-Trans wishes to engage Pulsar again in year two to build upon the gains made in awareness of the service. A longtime partner with G-Trans, Pulsar was instrumental in building the G-Trans brand identity, including its new logo, bus library, and brand standards. In addition, Pulsar helped develop the concept design and launch campaign for G-Trans' seventieth anniversary, the website, and new service initiatives that took place in twenty fifteen and twenty sixteen. More recently, Pulsar helped, uh, create the design and logo renewed for the, for the two new City of Gardena hometown trolleys that joined the G-Trans fleet in twenty twenty-one. Over the years, the partnership with Pulsar has been invaluable, and G-Trans plans to again contract with them to develop a marketing approach for this important service. For year two, Pulsar will leverage existing assets and build upon existing design to cost-effectively target key audiences using own media, digital and social media, and mobile app banner ads. And staff has reviewed the proposal and costs, and costs ensure that the, that they are fair and reasonable. G-Trans has eligible funding within the fiscal year twenty-two budget, and it also has program funding within the proposed fiscal year twenty-three budget for council consideration. No impact, there is no impact to the general fund. What's required tonight is to approve the contract.
Okay, are there any questions or comments at this time?
One.
Go ahead.
So, um, their, um, their advertising campaign has been focused on social media? Mostly, or is there any print media going on here or?
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Um, Councilmember Francis, it's a, a good point. Our, our media is, our campaign is, it's all assets, so there's print, there's digital, there's, um, most of our traffic, though, for ticket sales that we learn comes from mobile. So, we build partnerships with SoFi, so that, um, all our web information is on their web pages, the ticket holders, and then it pushes them to our website. We found that Instagram and Facebook were our biggest, um, um, I guess you could say, used assets, and then along with our printed material, but the two biggest that we saw that people use, um, are those two, mostly because all ticket holders, um, now have to go with the digital ticket on a phone. So, they, they, they want their info on the phone.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Any more questions or comments? Madam City Clerk, do we have anybody from the public?
No, Madam Mayor, we do not.
Okay. Um, that being the case, um, can I get a motion to approve the contract?
All moved.
Okay. Um, I saw Councilmember Francis' hand go up first, so I'm going to go with that first, and then, uh, seconded by Councilmember Henderson. Madam City Clerk, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Francis? You're muted. Councilmember Francis?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Tanaka?
Yes.
Councilmember Cascanian?
Yes.
Mayor Serta?
Yes. Okay, next up are council directors. Do we have any at this time?
Yes.
Start with, um, sorry, uh, Mayor Protem?
Just a quick one. Uh, I'm not sure if it's, uh, G-Trans or Public Works, but, uh, we still have these green trashcans out on the curbs. And, uh, for the last week, I have seen no less than five of them dumped over into the street. So, I'm just wondering if there's something that we can do about making sure that these things are getting emptied because they're just full.
Okay.
There a second needed for that?
Yes.
A second.
Thank you.
Any more directives?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Okay, um, I wanted to thank, uh, Director Ricks for the memo about, uh, replacing a drought, drought-tomb turf on Manhattan Beach, but I was more concerned about meeting with West Basin. That's, that's a good thing, but I was more concerned about meeting with West Basin to begin a conversation about, um, replacing, taking a look at what, what can be done by our park landscape, as well as landscape around City Hall. You know, that, um, it has been updated, and I think those little hedges and all that have been there ever since I can remember, and that's a pretty good while. But that's, that's pretty much, um, what we were asking about. That's, that was the, um, the recommendation I brought before from the Beautification Committee. Not just, uh, one piece of it, but also to take a look at what we can do about our park, parklands, and particularly now that, that we're in a state of drought.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay.
Oh, all right, okay.
Okay.
And just, um, one, just, just two more. I was looking at our city website. I'm, I don't quite remember exactly what I was looking at, looking for, but is there, uh, someone that can on a regular basis update our, our website to make sure that the information is current? Do we have a person on, on staff that does that or?
Councilmember Francis, we do have, um, somebody that, that updates the website, but not on a, not currently on a, on a regular basis. We are looking into, uh, potentially hiring a webmaster to, uh, uh, man that, uh, regularly. So, that's probably going to happen in the, uh, I believe that's in the, uh, next year's budget. As soon as we get into the next year, we're, we'll look into that.
Okay, and, and just one more. Um, and I, I didn't see it. I was looking through the budget, and I couldn't find it. But you know those security cameras we had at Raleigh Park? I think that was when, if, if this wasn't under your term, this was under, uh, Ed Medrano's. I remember this thing cost about a billion dollars. And did we ever update them, or are they still working or?
I believe, um, some of them are, might not be operable anymore. They probably passed this life, um, the life expectancy of the, the cameras, I believe. Uh, we had a, we had a discussion on that, and I don't think all of them are working anymore.
Okay. Are, are they a part of that, uh, capital improvement, uh?
That, I believe, was, uh, purchased using, um, you know, the asset forfeiture, I believe, and there was no, there was nothing programmed to keep on, uh, up, I mean, uh, maintaining that, um, asset. So, um, it was a one-time purchase, but I don't think that, uh, the, uh, the maintenance was, was ever, um.
There was a contract. I would argue for that.
The chief would like to chime in, um, real quickly here, and that might shed some light on this here.
Yeah, thank you.
If we could move the chief over as a panelist at this point, please? Deputy Clerk, if we could bring in Chief Sefil, I think he'd like to just chime in on this here. There we go.
Okay.
There you go. Go ahead and unmute.
Good evening. How are you? Yeah, so we do have cameras at Raleigh Park. Uh, that system is, um, approaching end of life. Uh, we do have a contract with Data Gear to maintain those, those, uh, cameras. So, it, it is sporadic. They do go down and have to be repaired. But again, we, we, as you mentioned, we will have to, uh, decide what we're going to do in the long term about improving that, the camera system.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I have two things, just follow-up.
Okay.
Things. Uh, one, a follow-up on the, uh, the study that was being, uh, executed on one forty-seven as far as, uh, speeding mitigation. I know PD was looking at that. Just send us a follow-up memo. And the second one, Mr. City Manager, would be, uh, just a follow-up on our, our application to CPUC about our broadband initiative, just to see where we are with that, if we've heard anything.
Is there a second on that?
I give you a second.
I'll second that.
Okay. Anything else?
That was it. Thank you, Madam Mayor, sorry.
Okay. Any more directives?
Uh, Madam Mayor, I have a, a comment regarding, uh.
Comment or directive?
Well, no, no, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you. I'll follow up with my in my comments. Thanks.
Okay, I'm doing our remarks. Thank you. Anybody else, any more directors?
Nope.
Nope, okay. So let's move on to City Manager remarks regarding our previous directors and council items.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of City Council. I have three memos sent out to the City Council. The first one is regarding the drought-related measures. Second one is the results of the Internet Connection Survey, which is approximately twenty four to two nine, or let's say twenty five thousand to do the survey and get the responses back. That includes postage both ways. And then the third memo that I sent out regards to the cost to participate in the Wall That Heals Tour. As stated in the memo, that cost to participate in that tour is eleven thousand dollars plus twenty to twenty five thousand in staffing, security, police services, and other incidentals that we may need. So all in all, you're looking at thirty five thousand, thirty six thousand to participate. We would have to be selected by the the committee that puts out this tour, and if we are selected, going to be notified in October of two thousand twenty three. And we could send a deposit out of about fifty five hundred dollars, and that's I'd have to get a council approval for that because of the amount that exceeds my authority. I believe we have a video that our deputy city clerk will be playing momentarily.
How about we do this? Let me go ahead and start council council remarks, and Deputy Clerk, if we can get it going between now and then, just notify me and we can do that part in between. Mr. City Manager, did you have anything else you want to report besides the video?
No, Madam Mayor, that would be the end of it.
Okay, yeah, so Deputy Clerk, just let me know whenever you can get it working for what you need. Okay, let's go ahead and begin with council remarks. First up is Councilmember Cascanian.
Yes, Madam Mayor. Before I start my remarks, I would like to chime into my colleague, Anderson. When I was walking precincts about, I would say about two weeks ago, on one forty seven between Venice and Crenshaw, I did experience myself that people are speeding over there like crazy, and with their muffler, exhaust muffler, you know, loud and everything. So that's that's that is a concern, maybe we have to have, you know, I know the the police department are on top of it, but I can say that I did experience that craziness that was going on between Venice and Crenshaw and one forty seventh street. Since our last meeting, Madam Mayor, I attended the Government Day with the youth, the luncheon, and it was a great program. Stephanie sent in, she's doing a great job, and and it was it was like an experience for the youth, it was it was great. So good job for you, to Stephanie and the staff that they did this thing that with the youth. On, let's see, June, because I make marks on my, okay, June fourth, meet and greets, and the come down to the Boulevard, on Gardena Boulevard. So that was that was a great event too as well. Thank you, Stephanie, again, on your job well done. And, Madam Mayor, and today I attended the Flag Day, and that's end my reports. Hours, it's almost twelve o'clock, so we'll keep the rest for next time. Thank you.
Okay. Next up is Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Because the hour is long, I'll just go real quickly. I did attend my responsible Governor's Committee meeting with BizFed. We had a discussion around how affordable housing does not increase crime. I know there's been some concerns and chatter about that, but there's some data out there that demonstrates that that is not a major issue when you have workforce housing or affordable housing. I have my own community meetings. I was at the SCAG, Community Economic and Housing Development Regional Council meeting as well. We're actually going to be talking about the arena numbers and the potential readdressing that issue. A lot of communities had challenges with the arena numbers, and I think folks have come to understand that there may have been some errors in the allocations. So that's being re-discussed, so stay tuned on that. I'll report back. Did the Gardena Street Fair, El Camino Diamond Jubilee Celebration, Gardena Sandlot. I attended my cannabis roundtable with with League of Cities and everything, so it was a great discussion. Results may vary on a city depending upon what your ordinances are, different things. Some had great positive experiences. Other cities have had horrible experiences and hate that they embarked on it. There are some guidance we can get from the state as we look to further down the road of cannabis, if we agree to that. Luckily, we do have somewhat of an ordinance in place that we at least control how we're going to do it, if we're going to do it as a community. I have some other resources for you, Mr. City Manager, regards to your city manager counterparts in some of these cities. Also, I would, I wanted to share a thought that as we talk about these long-term contracts and different things like that, it's part of a best practice scenario as you work to fix your expenses and your costs. As you budget moving forward, it becomes a little bit easier to budget moving forward, and you can kind of then account for deltas and fluctuations with revenues and expenditures and everything like that. So it's a best practice, it's going to take us to get there, a while to get there, but we're on the road to that. What else did I participate in? A bunch of stuff, Madam Mayor. A future-ready city think tank with the city of, not Palo Alto, but Los Altos. The city manager up there, they led a symposium talking about being a future-ready city. I think we're looking to do that, being a smart city with our infrastructure. We still got a ways to go. I'm still doing my environmental justice work to address some of the things in our EJ element and everything as we move forward with our council and our community and different things. And Madam Mayor, I'll just end my report right there.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Francis, if you don't mind, staff just notified me that the video is ready, if you don't mind, if we just go ahead and show it first. Okay, Deputy City Clerk, you can go ahead and show it, and then we'll go back to our directives. Okay. Thank you very much. It's great. Okay, so now we're going to go back to our directives. I'm going to pick back up here with Councilmember Francis.
Okay, remarks, right?
Yes, remarks.
Okay, I'm sorry. I got confused. Okay, so anyway, since our last meeting, I attended the Bring It on the Boulevard Festival, and that was a lot of fun. Also attended the Resource David Seniors at Raleigh Park. I did our Flag Day celebration, it was a great program. And also attended the Greater Los Angeles County Vector Control District Meeting, which I'm a trustee. And did you know that June nineteenth through June twenty fifth is National Mosquito Control Week? Well, it is. And as we, and as we move from spring into summer, you know, those little mosquitoes that we all know and love, but are very, very important to our environment, you'll be surprised. Everything is created with a purpose. But it, we do move into mosquito season, and there are things we can do to help protect ourselves, and hopefully at the next council meeting, we'll have a video, a short presentation. But if you'd like more information on mosquitoes, you can go to MosquitoWatch.org for more information. And also, by the time we meet again, the City Gardena is hosting its inaugural Juneteenth celebration. And it was signed and signed into it as a federal holiday by President Joe Biden. And the importance of Juneteenth is that it was June nineteenth in eighteen sixty five, a full two and a half years after the Emancipation Proclamation was signed, that Union troops rode into Galveston, Texas, to let slaves know that they were free, a whole two and a half years. And it was on June nineteenth, and since then, it's been celebrated as Juneteenth, and is now a national holiday, and hopefully we celebrate it throughout the United States. And another important day on June nineteenth is Father's Day, and I want to wish all your dads and daddies and uncles and big brothers and grandpapas and bonus dads and mentors and all the men who stepped up and stood into stood in the gap a very happy Father's Day. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And for myself, since last council meeting, because everybody made their short, I'll go ahead and give my whole list. I'll make it very quick. Few things I attended since last meeting, the first one being our city selection meeting that was held. We usually do that one quarterly for all the cities within the county. I too also participated in the Youth and Government Day, and I I just have to say kudos to all the departments that participated in that. We were still talking about that event earlier today. I've never participated in an event like that, where we brought in all of our departments, where they had to had a part in it, whether it was PD, Parks and Rec, Finance Department, and so on, and kind of educating the kids on what all these different departments do within the city, Public Works, Community Development. And these young people, they were so amazing, having the opportunity to sit and talk with them, and just seeing how enthused they were. In fact, one young lady who was sitting at my table, she was a little upset because her tour went a little longer in one other department, and she want she really wanted to see the Finance Department, and she was only thirteen. So I was just really impressed with just how enthusiastic, how enthusiastic these young people were, and I am looking forward to us doing this again. And I want to thank all of the departments who participated in that, because that was an event like no other that we've had in our city. I also attended the candidates forum that was held by the Holly Park Homeowners Association. I also attended the funeral services for Miss Esther Barbit. She had turned a hundred and two a couple of months prior, and I was very happy the fact that we were able to celebrate her birthday with her. We were asked if we could do a police drive-by and fire, fire department drive-by, and we did that, and she was so excited and happy. And I just also like to thank the GVN for even just being there and taking pictures. It really made her day. So I attended, like I said, her funeral services. I also attended the Senior Candlelight Dinner that we had, it was our first one that we've had in person since coming back from the pandemic here, or as we're coming out of the pandemic. I also attended the funeral services for Joseph Ward, Nancy Ward's son, his memorial service. Also, since the last council meeting, I attended Ms. Rosemary Martinez, her unfortunately, her retirement, and but it was a very nice retirement, and gave her a certificate from the City of Gardena, got a chance to talk about what an amazing job she's done for LAUSD and working with the City of Gardena. I also attended the budget forum that was put on by our city manager and Ray Beaman. You guys did an awesome job presenting the the budget forum. Ray Beaman. You guys did an awesome job presenting uh the uh, the budget form there. And then also I attended the uh the mixer that we had for the City Manager and the Chief of Police uh as a way of our businesses kind of getting to know um our City Manager as well as our Chief of Police. Um, it was really important to have this here because when they first came on, it was right in the middle of the pandemic. So a lot of our business owners didn't get the chance to formally uh meet the City Manager and the new chief. So I'm glad those who were able to attend had that opportunity. On the next day, I attended um Connecta Bank as they presented a check to our senior um, senior Bureau uh Department for our senior um activities. It was a check of the amount of two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. So a special thank you to uh Connecta. They are just a really awesome credit union there, and I encourage more people to consider uh becoming members there. I also attended uh Bring It to the Boulevard, another great event that our staff did. Um, then I attended a sanitation, LA County Sanitation Collective meeting. Uh, that meeting was a, a meeting of, I don't know, forty different cities all on Zoom together as we were negotiating um uh raises for our sanitation workers. And then on uh yesterday, I attended the Senior Resource Fair um that was uh put on at Raleigh Park and also in conjunction with uh Holly Mitchell. And then earlier today, I participated in the Flag Day ceremony. Uh, and the one last thing I'd just like to mention is um I mentioned it several times in the past, but I really want to encourage the community to um start reporting again uh the graffiti that you're seeing around town. I know sometimes people always say, you know, I'm sure staff sees it at City Hall or, you know, you as elected officials. We have a lot, a lot of ground to cover in our community here, and we need the help of our residents. If you report it, we can clean it up. And I'm just noticing such an increase all over the place. Uh, so we're just asking for the community's help and just making sure you either go on our app at Gardena Direct, call City Hall, you can email us, there's a variety of different ways, uh but please report it. Um, the app makes it really simple. You can do it day or night, and um you can kind of see in real time uh where we're at as far as getting it cleaned up. So with that, that ends my report, and next up is uh Mayor Potem Tanaka.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In fact, I just used Gardena Direct uh the other day for graffiti, and it got removed. So it works. Okay, so I have a lot, but I'm gonna go really fast, uh, and I probably won't stop to, for too much. But I did attend uh Youth and Government, uh, the seniors' cannoli luncheon. I gave blood, the UCLA Bud, Blood Drive, I gave blood. Uh, attended the Budget Session, uh City Hall. That was an awesome job by uh our Finance Department and City Manager. Uh, attended John and Nancy Ward's son's uh memorial, Joseph. Um, it was, it was quite a touching uh tribute by uh John to his son. Uh, did the Gardena Boulevard event. That was uh for the first event. It was really a good one, and I know uh the future will actually be even better. So uh, keep, keep that one up. Uh, I attended my COG Legislative Committee uh meeting, and that's interesting because um Senator Marasucci and Senator uh Ellen are helping uh the COG trying to get a um Housing Trust, and they're working on trying to get us a, a little nest egg, just try to get that started. So that, that's helping. Um, let's see. Um, I did the meet and greet with the COP and the City Manager. Um, and that was a pretty good event for a first one. Um, attended the PD Sandlot Baseball. Um, no, I didn't play. I know my limitations. Uh, District Three uh meeting, attended that. Um, Annie's mom, uh Esther Barbitt's funeral, uh, uh, attended that memorial. I also attended the South Bay COGS Budget Review Meeting. Uh, our dues will be coming up here pretty soon. Uh, I attended the COGS, uh, South Bay COGS Steering Committee meeting, and uh, oh, I attended my uh fiftieth class reunion, the Wall Marisians nineteen seventy-one, Bohicans. Um, attended Flag Day today, and I was just, uh, I was thankful that I could do the invocation, but it was really impressive to watch uh our youth present their essays. And uh, the two first-place winners, uh, they put a lot of effort and thought into their essays, and I'm gonna tell you what, it was just totally impressive on on what they felt about our country and our flag. So thank you for that. Um, happy Father's Day to everybody, to all the fathers out there, including myself. Um, and uh, speaking of Flag Day, the Gardena Elks Lodge nineteen nineteen, which is right across from the police station. Tomorrow at seven-thirty PM, uh, we have an open meeting where our Girl Scout troop presents Flag Day. And it's a ceremony where they uh present every flag uh from the start of our country all the way uh to present, including uh our uh MIA POW flag. So that's something, if you've never seen it or heard it, uh, it'd be worth your time to come at seven-thirty to see that presentation. And lastly, and sadly, uh, I think we need to pray very hard for uh the City of El Monte, the El Monte Police Department, and the family of the two officers that were killed tonight. That ends my report.
Okay, thank you. Um, just two uh quick announcements. Um, one was already mentioned in the uh video today, but we have a Willows at Dusk. Um, the City of Gardena in partnership with the Friends of the Gardena Willow's Wetland Preserve are excited to host the Willows at Dusk this summer, so they have several dates that are available. Um, a couple of dates in June, July, and August from six to eight PM. And if you'd like to know more information about this, you can go to our cityofgardena.org page um and find out more information about Willows at Dusk. Also, uh, we have a citizen's safety forum coming up on June the eighteenth from ten AM to twelve PM. It's gonna be at the Knock Open Community Center. Uh, the topics are gonna be mental health, self-defense, and emergency response. And then moving on to remembrance tonight, um, we have a couple here. The first one, um, we're gonna adjourn in memory of Mr. Richard Kai-Sung Chung. He's the business owner and chairman of the South Bay Korean Soccer Club. Mr. Chung was, I'm also a longtime Gardena resident, resident for the past twenty years. We're also gonna adjourn in memory of Mr. Tat Toronto Yamura, who was
Ure Mura.
Say that again, please?
Ure Mura.
Ure Muma, thank you, who was ninety-six years of age, a longtime resident of Gardena. Mr. Uremura owned the Nisei um Oriental Gift Shop in Gardena for over forty years. He was a member of the Gardena Valley Kiwanis Club with fifty-five years of perfect attendance. He was inducted into the City Wall of Fame for his dedication to the betterment of the city. Um, he was former president of the Town and Country Business Association, and he was one of the organizers and first presence of the Gardena Downtown Business Association. We're also gonna adjourn in memory of um the two officers uh that were killed in the line of duty um on today in the City of El Monte. So at this time, we're gonna move to adjourn, uh, to our adjournment. The Gardena City Council um, the Gardena City Council will adjourn to uh the closed session portion of the City Council meeting at seven PM, followed by the regular City Council meeting at seven-thirty PM on Tuesday, June twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two. We are adjourned.
All right, all.
I wanna make one quick connection before we log off. It was just brought to my attention. I mentioned uh Connecta, Connecta donated two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. It was actually twenty-five hundred, so that they uh uh donated to uh, to our senior bureau here. So thank you for sending the correction over to me. All right, so we are adjourned, everyone. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night, everyone. Happy Father's Day.
Happy Father's.
Thanks.
Happy Juneteenth.
All right.
See you on Saturday.
Yes.